All right, are we ready to go? We're ready? Glasses on?
Glasses on.
Good evening, everyone. The April 15th, 2024 Legislative Session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are turned to silent at this time. We will now have the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Smith.
Please stand. Please pray in a manner that is consistent with your faith, as I will pray in a manner that is consistent with mine. Dear Father, thank you for another opportunity to come here today. Thank you for allowing us to be honest and open and transparent with our public citizens. Thank you for blessing us and giving us wisdom to ensure that the citizens of this county are taken care of. Thank you for building us up each and every single day as we deal with the stresses of life. I want you to impart wisdom amongst all the council members who have to make tough decisions from day into day out. Dear Lord, we just ask for you to watch us as we travel over the highways and the byways, and that you continue to bless us as we seek wisdom and while we strive to be and serve in your honor. And all these things we pray. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that, under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located in the Ethics website under forms of publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. Before we open our discussions in public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. We will now open our invitation to audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received four pieces, which have been shared, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Thank you. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When your name is called, please come up to the table and state your name and address before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I have first Fiona Hillier and Suzanne George.
You may proceed. Good evening. My name is Fiona Hillier. I live at 8062 Solley Road in Glen Burnie. That's Region 3. So I'm signed up to speak this evening because I have some concerns regarding the Freetown Sewage Pump Station on Solley Road. I happen to live about 500 feet from that. Both pumps have failed at the sewage pump station, and one of my neighbors I was chatting with mentioned she had a sewage coming into her house. And her house is fairly new. The houses in that area were built within about the last five or six years. My own house is three years old. So unfortunately, two pumps have failed at the pump station. I was able to find that information from Department of Public Works website. They have a GIS map on there, which has the locations of all the sewage failures in the county. So there's quite a number in Region 3. So this affects us, you know, as someone who lives close by, concerns. This is actually the second time since we've lived there in three years that there's been a sewage issue. The last time lime had to be put down on the grass verge opposite our property, and it was quite a large spill that time. I think it might have been a couple of years ago, and it did make the news as a considerable concern. So my concern mainly is that, you know, it's a public health issue if sewage is raw sewage is coming into someone's house. That hasn't happened to my house, but certainly did to my neighbor across the street. So I just wondered what perhaps, you know, Department of Public Works might be planning to look at the infrastructure, if it's sufficient to handle, you know, many new houses going in. I'm a new home purchaser myself, as are a number of my neighbors, and unfortunately we're concerned about the sewage situation.
Thank you. Is Ms. Suzanne George here in attendance? Okay. Ms. Johnson, you have the floor.
Julie Johnson, Field Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. Tonight, we're not really talking about the advanced, you know, financial situation of the State Highway Administration and how this impacts, you know, what's happening in Anarundel County. But I spent a significant amount of time this summer trying to visit different people at the State Highway Administration, saying, you know, we have mentioned that I would really like to have a safer, you know, path in front of my home, because a lot of people have nearly run over me and, you know, and other people. I mean, I have not, you know. And so anyway, the punchline is, there is no money anywhere in the, you know, in the State Highway Administration funds for any additional roads, you know, because what they're doing with the Bay Bridge ends or begins, depending on how you look at it, on the east side of the Severn River Bridge. So if you're west of, you know, that, there is no money for it. And they say it over and over again. There is no money for sidewalks. There is no money for bike paths. There is no money to widen this, to give you, give a better, you know, a better shape to the highway. It is very, very serious, and it really takes some, you know, I mean, I hate to ask you to do such hard work, because it's not happy. You know, everybody wants to be happy. But we're going to have more dead bodies, because I've told you that, you know, down the block from me, there have been two fatal accidents, you know, because people can't negotiate that curve. There is no sidewalk. There is no adequate space. So I hope that you are really building that into all of your programs as you look at all the different regions.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Minahan, go ahead.
Good evening. Matt Minahan, 3651 First Avenue, Edgewater, Maryland. Madam Chair, council members, our again theme this week is good governance, and there are three matters I want to reference on the topic of good governance. First, we're approaching two years since we began asking the council to create a hybrid meeting option to allow citizens in the farthest reaches of this spread-out county to participate in the governance of the county. At first, we were told it was a technology and software issue. Then the council had to amend its rules for this to happen. Who knew that would take the council almost a full year to do that? Then you had to hire an IT person, and the job had been advertised, and then there was a leak in the building that didn't allow the monitor in the wall to be used. At what point is this council going to commit to make these meetings more accessible to people who don't have the privilege of being out late on a school night, work night, homework night, or any late night that makes driving in the dark impossible? I ask you to move aside whatever impediments could be dreamt up and to make this happen for the sake of all of your constituents. Second, on good governance, we will testify later this evening about a longer notice period is better governance. And third, we will say to you what we said to the county executive. The imperative for affordable housing in this county is powerful and persuasive, but the public's number-one concern is traffic and congestion, which continues to be unaddressed in the bills in which the housing density is further increased. Good governance, smart governance, would include companion efforts to address traffic congestion concerns at the same time. In these cases, the critical infrastructure deficiencies are where the pain is felt by most current homeowners. And we believe that addressing those concerns, along with hybrid meetings and a lengthened notice period, would all be hallmarks of good governance that the council would take to heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The three of you are dismissed. This is the last call for invitation to audience, which is folks to testify on things not on the printed agenda. Mr. Muller, you have the floor. Two minutes, sir.
Gary Muller from Jessup, West County. I just want to bring to the council members' attention a book that I think would be well purpose to read. I know a lot of people are reading a book that was published by the Brookings Institute called Fixer Upper. And quite frankly, after watching the video presentation by the author, I find it very offensive. I think a better book would be Better, Not Bigger. It's How to Take Control of Urban Growth and Improve Your Community. And it was a gentleman, Eben Fudu, who grew up in the Frederick area, which is farms and pastures and rolling hills. I think it's a good contrast to the book that was published by Jenny Schultz, I think it is, from Brookings Institute, which is really is offensive to people my age who have been involved in land use issues and coming down here to the council for better than 30-some years. So I would encourage you to take a look at this book and contrast it to what you may have read in Fixer Upper, because this is much more appealing to me and a lot of my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I had Ms. George, Suzanne George, had signed up in advance to speak on, at invitation to audience. Has she arrived?
I have, thank you.
You're welcome. This is, you may come forward. I just want to make sure this is something that's not on the printed agenda. That your topic, this is invitation to audience, so you're not coming to speak on a bill that's currently on the agenda tonight, is that correct?
Oh, I'm sorry. I am signed up to speak tonight, so.
So this part of the public is called invitation to audience, where people can come and speak for two minutes on topics that are not part of the printed agenda, not pieces of legislation that are already under.
Yes, that's correct.
Consideration.
I have two, so I'm speaking on a bill, and I'm also speaking.
Okay. You are welcome to take a seat.
I'm a newbie.
Happy to educate how we roll here. Happy to educate. No problem.
Thank you.
State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
My name is Suzanne George. 8257 Waterford Road, Pasadena, Maryland, 21122. My general comment tonight, first, thank you for having me here to speak on behalf of my family and myself. We are constituents in District 3, Region 4, residing in Pasadena. We are speaking regarding impacts for what happened to us and that continues to happen by allowing a residential R1 piece of property to be zoned commercial C4. We implore you to prevent the prioritization of financial gain over the health and well-being of neighboring properties. When you consider the ongoing development plans for Region 4, we ask that you maintain your vote to require signage for all zoning changes to all properties, offering the neighboring properties the right to speak, whether it be for or against it. We formally request all necessary amendments that may be needed in order to support this. I am a West End Island survivor in the state of Maryland, two in the county. I am one of them. I use that term survivor because of how dangerous it is over the age of 50. The property immediately next door to us was R1 zoned to C4 without any consideration to the impact on us for the types of businesses that would be conducted there. The properties all along our road are zoned R1. The property next door to us was the residential property between us and all the businesses that run along the east side of Route 100. That property operates on a nonconformance. We spent years complaining of the encroachment and commercial uses of the residential property until one day overnight, I was told by OPZ, "Sorry, Ms. George, it's been rezoned C4." Since then, our lives have been beyond miserable, and our health and home is at constant risk. Severe extreme mosquito infestations, all documented by Maryland Department of Environment.
Thank you, Ms. George.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
At this time, invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda at this time? May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Rodbeen, so move.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of April 1st, 2024.
The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 7:04 PM. It opened with the invocation given by Ms. Ledbetter and was followed by the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 1st, 2024?
Rodbeen, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of April 1st, 2024 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 2724, An Ordnance Concerning General Development Plan, Region 4 Plan. Bill Number 2824, An Ordnance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region 4. Bill Number 2924, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Coffee Roasters. Bill Number 3024, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Planned Unit Developments, Community and Employment. Bill Number 3124, An Ordnance Concerning Pensions, Reemployment, Reduction of Benefits.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 1524, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anarundel County to Permit the County Council to Increase the Minimum Value of Purchases and Contracts Subject to a Simplified Competitive Procurement Process from Greater Than $5,000 to Greater Than $10,000, and Increase the Minimum Value of Purchases That Are Required to Be Published on the County Website from $5,000 or Greater to Greater Than $10,000.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bills Number 6-24 and Bill 724.
Bill Number 624, An Ordnance Concerning General Development Plan, Region 2 Plan. Bill Number 724, An Ordnance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region 2.
Thank you. This is an administration bill. Welcome to join us at the table.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Christina Pampa and Mark Wildonger from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. Bill 624 relates to, sorry, give me one second, the Region 2 Plan. I know there are some amendments. We've discussed this bill at several prior council meetings and work session. We're happy to answer any questions or jump into the public hearing.
Is there any discussion from my colleagues at this time? I want to go into the joint public hearing. We will now open the joint public hearing on Bills 624 and 724. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, we received one piece for Bill Number 724, which has been shared, added to the record, and posted to the website.
We do have some people signed up ahead of time. When I call your name, please come to the table and have a seat. I have John and Tracy Day, Kathy Suter. At this time, though, we do have six seats, so if there are others that are intending to speak, you may come up and fill the seats. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
John Day, Tracy Yowes, 7619 Ray Road, Hanover.
Go ahead.
I would like to speak on the Amendment Number 5. Councilmember Smith, we very much appreciate you putting this amendment forth. Our families are appreciative. It means a great deal to us to retain zoning at the R1 level. We appreciate all the help you've given us, and again, the support. We would also are very hopeful that your fellow council members would as well support Pete and our family in retaining the R1 zoning for a property that's been in the family for well over 80 years. It means a great deal to us, and it will, if we retain the R1, it will impact for generations of our family and, you know, the future of the kids building on the property, and it just keeps flowing down. We'd also like to thank the zoning office. They've been helpful and patient, and the legal processes we had to navigate through, the zoning office was extremely helpful. And we're looking forward to a vote when it happens on Amendment Number 5. And again, we're very hopeful that you guys will also support Councilmember Smith and that vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And did you want to speak as well, ma'am? No, you're just coming up for support. Okay. We're going to move down the table.
I'm sorry. My purse got filled with water earlier, and I was trying to rewrite the letter so I could read it. Can I have a few more moments?
Sure, go ahead, sir. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Mark Camuta, for the President of the Homeowner Association for Magnolia Creek Subdivision, which is off of Wiggly Road, just down the path from Route 175. I'm here today because of two main points, and I've spoken to Mr. Smith about this already. Two, one, the current code for water flow, water flow management, wastewater management, it's not working, or developers are not being held accountable to the code, one or the other. We're a brand-new subdivision. We've got people, only two years we've got, and we've got a good chunk, like 30 of 78 homes, that are flooding, their backyards are constantly flooding, multiple homes have had their basements breached, including in one case where it actually was bursting inward from the pressure. The geologic surveys had previously shown that we're solid clay. There is no percolating. And we're 30 feet below 175 on one end and another 30 or 40 feet. So all that water going down to a stream is going right through our subdivision, and there's no control. The developers were not held accountable to it, and now they're being told that because we're, quote, "private watershed," we have to pay for all that. We have no reserve. They left us no reserve. So they didn't do any of the things they were supposed to do. The watersheds aren't working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Muller, how about, you go ahead. It's not ready yet.
I'm sorry.
No problem. You have two minutes, though.
Gary Muller, live across the street from Magnolia Creek. Please consider the wishes of the entire community, adjusted to retain small business zoning along Maryland 175 in regards to CZR2, JSP101. The citizens spoke up loud and clear during legal proceedings by Corporate Office Properties Trust, COBT, to the upzoning of their property from small business to W1. The Jessup community spent over $35,000 in legal fees to protect and defend small business zoning along Maryland 175, because it works. Tom Foz, the Vice President of Development of COP, and represented them during the legal proceedings in front of the hearing officer and also in the Board of Appeals. The hearing officer and the Board of Appeals both agreed that small business zoning was appropriate and should remain on that property. Our victory in court was short-lived because the county council, according to Tom Foz, along with two other senior employees of another developer doing business along 175, and a resident who filed a luke during Plan 2040 to upzone this property to W1, all of them were appointing to the Region 2 SAC. During the county council confirmation hearing, a Jessup resident testified that she thought the appointment of three individuals employed by developers who were seeking additional property to build on was a possible conflict of interest and an ethics issue. The council ignored her and made the appointments anyway. These individuals stating that these individuals should recuse themselves when there was a discussion of the property that it had a vested interest in. During the Region 2 SAC meetings, which I attended all, no one recused themselves. Please respect the wishes of the citizens of Jessup and retain small business along 175. Thank you.
Thank you. It's your turn, ma'am. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Kathy Sauter, 1827 Montevideo Road, Jessup, Maryland. Good evening. I have lived in Jessup for the last 23 years. In the last three to five years, there have been many changes to our neighborhood and many disruptions to our lives. There is construction everywhere. Our green fields and wooded areas are being bulldozed and replaced with concrete and blacktop. As a result of the construction, many areas have encountered flooding and damage to their homes, including mine. Our local fruit stand has been replaced with a rural farm store, and traffic is out of control, with no infrastructure plan in sight. Jessup is a historic neighborhood, and I would ask that you take that into consideration when making any decisions about zoning or building in our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course. This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone else in the audience interested to speak on Bill 6 or Bill 7? Sir, you have the floor. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Carol Little, 1621 Lindley Drive, Hanover, Maryland. I am currently the Secretary of the Waterbury Forest HOA. I come here also asking that you make sure that we advocate that regarding 724, that the two land parcels, parcels 118 and 164, that were considered there for rezoning as R2 are retained as R1. We've had an opportunity to speak with the Councilman Pete Smith on this, and as I understand, there are other items to be considered as well, including funding for the watershed table. I forgot what the term is. But referring to my colleague from Magnolia Creek, our neighborhood has encountered also some stormwater issues with those two parcels next to us. We anticipate further problems. So at the very least, we're asking also to make sure funding is provided to review that watershed table, to make sure that any further building, whether it be R1, R2, or anything further, is also considered, so that you have modern, current information to base what the infrastructure should be, whether it be stormwater management, traffic, and other resources as well. But again, I'm here hoping that those two lands parcels next to us will remain R1. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
There it is. Okay, thank you. My name's Georgie Muller, live on Apple Avenue in Jessup, and also own property off Wiggly Avenue, across the street from Magnolia Creek. So I've suggested to a lot of politicians that want my vote, I want them to describe to me, what is progress? Okay? And nobody has really told me what is progress. I know I asked Pete about this one time, and he wasn't able to. I know I asked Pete about this one time, and he wasn't able to give me an answer. So it was progress when women got the right to vote. It was progress when we recognized slavery was wrong, inhuman, and unjust and cruel. It was progress when the Supreme Court ruled that it was wrong and unconstitutional to remove the Cherokee and other nations from their homeland. By the way, it was greedy land speculators who had Andrew Jackson ignore the court and create the Trail of Tears. It was progress when we made working conditions fair and equitable for the working class and spoke up for workers' rights. It is not progress to increase the traffic when the current Route 175 cannot handle that increase and cause traffic jams daily, even on the weekends. It is not progress when flooding continues throughout, excuse me, the properties of residents of Jessup, which is a direct result of overdevelopment. It is not progress when only the corporate builders are the ones making money from our misery. It is not progress when the rest of creation is displaced, they live in our community too. It is not progress when our environment is negatively impacted, and it is not progress when greedy land speculators take the priority over health of our community.
Thank you. The joint public hearing on Bill Six, number Six, and Bill number seven dash twenty-four is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bill Six dash twenty-four and seven dash twenty-four.
Bill number six twenty-four, in ordinance concerning general development plan, Region Two Plan. Bill number seven twenty-four, in ordinance concerning comprehensive zoning, Region
As we amended both of these bills at our April first meeting, is there any discussion before we head into amendments this evening? Seeing none, the administration, you're good? We're good? Okay. We're going to have, like we did at the last meeting, we're going to have a back-and-forth. We're going to stick, we're going to amend both Six and Seven when they align to an individual property. So you're going to see us toggling back between two bills on some amendments and not on others. So just pay attention. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number seven to Bill Six dash twenty-four.
Before we do that, would you like me to make a note about the certifications?
I skipped right over it. It's okay. Kristin's not going to be happy with me. Please, Madam Secretary.
I just wanted to put on the record that signs were posted and certifications were received for all of the corresponding amendments the council will be introducing this evening.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number seven to Bill Six dash twenty-four.
Amendment number seven, this amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as Parcels 296 and 298 on Tax Map Eight located on 7549 Teague Road and 7553 Teague Road, Hanover, from parks and open space to public use.
This is a county executive amendment. Did you want to give us a little intel?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. This amendment was requested by the administration. We had a request from our sister agency, the Department of Recreation and Parks, to change the planned land use on part of the property that they own on Teague Road in Hanover from parks and open space to public use. And this goes back to concerns about devaluation of the land if it was ever needed for another use. This has to do with how the park was financed, and we have other properties that are on some of the maps that are in a similar situation. So this was one that we did not catch in advance of submitting the bill, and we had asked for your support.
Is there a motion to adopt amendment number seven to Bill Six dash twenty-four? Is there a second?
Radveen, second.
Are there any questions of my colleagues for the administration regarding this amendment? Mr. Smith?
Just saying, I did, this is in District One, so I was good with the amendment.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number seven to Bill Six dash twenty-four.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rabian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the positive, zero in the negative. Amendment number seven has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number eight to Bill Six dash twenty-four.
Amendment number eight, this amendment changes the planned land use for eleven properties known as Parcels 86, 108, 166, 383, 467, and 543 on Tax Map Fourteen for certain properties located on and portions of Use Avenue, Jessup and Ray Road, Hanover, from low-medium-density residential to low-density residential.
Mr. Smith, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Yes, so, and just to confirm, there's a corresponding amendment, number five, which is the actual map itself, so Six is the plan, Six is the plan, Seven is the map itself, just to make sure the audience is aware, that's amendment number five. This pair of pieces of amendments, as the speakers spoke about earlier, Yaus, as I stated here, there are eleven properties. But what I'm doing is, this land was, during the comprehensive zoning process, designated to go to R5. It was not a land, a owner-generated sort of request, and at the request of the citizens who live there, in fact, that entire area, my goal is to take it back to R1. So you'll see a series of amendments that take large swaps of R5 proposed land and taking it back to R1. So that's what this legislation does for those properties. We're going to get into something later, that there is some adjacent property that did not meet the timeline for the signage, so those are going to be amended on May first, just kind of putting it out there. So if you didn't see it, it's because it didn't meet that qualification, so we're trying to address that with Twenty-six twenty-four, so we can amend it on May first and then fix the rest of that property with you. But I wanted to sort of make that public declaration. So that's what this does.
Do we adopt this amendment?
Oh, motion to adopt, I'm sorry.
Sir, a second.
Second.
The administration want to comment on this amendment?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Mr. Smith referenced that this is a larger area, it's about 117 acres. In the region plan, it's identified as Planned Land Use, PLU, R2, HAN, 103. This amendment is basically going to take fifty-six acres back out of that 117 and convert the planned land use from low-medium-density residential to low-density residential, which will set up the zoning amendment to go from R5 to R1. And obviously, we support. We've heard from the Yaus family, I think at least three hearings, so.
Okay. Any other discussion on amendment number eight to Bill Six dash twenty-four? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number eight.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rabian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the positive, none in the negative. Amendment number eight has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number five to Bill Seven dash twenty-four.
Amendment number five, this amendment changes the zoning for the eleven properties known as Parcels 86, 108, 166, 383, 467, and 543 on Tax Map Fourteen for certain properties located on and portions of Yaus Avenue, Jessup and Ray Road, Hanover, from R5 residential to R1 residential.
Mr. Smith?
Certainly, in that Hanover area in general, as one of the other speakers mentioned, it is, I live actually right in the area, right in the middle of it, so I can attest to the issues that they're facing, concerns when it comes to the water as well as the traffic. And so this goes from R5 back to R1. Motion to adopt.
Radveen, second.
The administration like to weigh in on amendment number five?
No, our comments are basically the same. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number five.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rabian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the positive, none in the negative. Amendment number five to Bill Seven twenty-four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number six to Bill Seven dash twenty-four.
Amendment number six, this amendment changes the zoning for an approximately seventy-two, or sorry, fifty-two acre portion of the property known as Parcel 372 on Tax Map Twenty-nine, identified as leased Parcel Z of the United States of America, Fort George G. Mead, Reese Road, Fort Mead, from R1 residential to C2 commercial office. Ms. Hummer, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Yes, this is kind of self-explanatory. This is a parcel that is owned by Fort Mead that is leased to an entity that they will be building commercial office space there for the fort, and we just need to make that change so that they can build that there on their own property. So I ask for your support and move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Radveen, second.
Does the administration like to weigh in on amendment number six?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. We, the Office of Planning and Zoning offers no objection. The leased area is located on federal property and is exempt from county zoning.
Mr. Smith, did you have a comment? Seeing no discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number six to Bill Seven dash twenty-four.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rabian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
I know I don't look like Ms. Ledbetter. I'm sorry.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number six to Bill Seven dash twenty-four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number nine to Bill Six dash twenty-four.
Amendment number nine, this amendment changes the planned land use for a portion of the property known as part of lots thirteen and fourteen, Parcel 219 on Tax Map Seven, located on 7246 Forest Avenue, Hanover, from low-density residential to parks and open space.
Mr. Smith, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Again, you'll see a couple of these amendments coming today in reference to specific landowners. They actually have a unique situation where there's a perennial, is that the right word, seasonal sort of stream that comes through their backyard. And so this initially was not requested by the county. The landowner requested it, and because it's in that area of Jessup that we are trying to sort of make, put a pause on a lot of things, I was okay with taking this back to open space, so it really can't be modified, this one, and I think there's two other properties that are coming up, but motion to adopt.
Sir.
Does the administration like to comment on amendment number nine?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I just want to remind the council that during the adoption of Plan 2040, which is the county's general development plan, that the natural features planned land use category was eliminated, and it was replaced with two new categories, conservation and parks and open space. The conservation planned land use was created for properties where conservation in perpetuity had been established through plaques or easements. Parks and open space planned land use was created for areas with active and passive recreational uses. In the case of this property, the landowner has requested a portion of their property returned to open space zoning, but the property meets neither of the definitions for conservation or parks and open space. So there would be a disconnect between the planned land use and the zoning. Any further development on these properties would be controlled by the language in Articles Seventeen and Eighteen in the county code. The zoning code controls the types and uses permitted and the density, and Articles Seventeen, the subdivision and development code, controls forest clearing and impact to natural features such as non-tidal floodplains, wetlands, streams, and steep slopes. So therefore, the property was recommended by the Office of Planning and Zoning for low-density residential planned land use and R1 zoning. Open space is not compatible with the planned land use policies that are established in Plan 2040.
Ma'am?
Mr. Smith?
I still would like to move forward with at least with the series of amendments, whatever language that needs to be addressed in the Plan 2040, I'm willing to address that, but I think it's certainly time to put a pause, and this certainly puts a rubber stamp on that area that, hey, there really is nothing going to happen here because, and obviously, the community that's here from that area is feeling like they haven't been represented over the last few years, four years or so, so I think, I still want to move forward with this amendment.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. What I worry about with things like this is somebody coming in administratively after the plan is adopted and arguing that the council somehow made a mistake or that there's been a change in the character of the community, and then justifying some sort of land use change down the road. That's the worry that I always have when you have what you've just described as an incompatible use with sort of the plan versus the zoning, because that's definitionally where you get that. So how is it that we make it clear in the legislative record so that when the administrative hearing officer gets this, if anybody moves forward, that this was not a mistake, that this was intentional, that the council did this? Is there a way to do that? And this may be a law question, but this is always my concern about anything like this, and we're going to have this come up more and more as we go through this region, and then as we get into Region Four, there's going to be more of that. So if you can address that, because obviously what you've said raises the specter of that being a potential basis for challenge on this designation, and I'd be interested to hear what can be put into the record to make it clear, the council intended to do this, we did not make a mistake.
Sure. Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. I think this discussion that everybody's having right now would really go a long way in making that. I mean, of course, I can't say what the hearing officer, what the Board of Appeals would find, but these would be the types of things that the applicant would have to point out and showing that this is what the council actually intended to do, and then show that it's not a mistake.
May I follow up?
You may.
So the legislative history of this discussion would be something that the applicant would have the burden of presenting to the hearing officer as well as to the Board of Appeals if it went there?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, yes. In the piecemeal rezoning cases, the legislative history is often discussed.
Perfect, thank you.
Can you, I'm painstakingly following my script so I don't skip an amendment, but can we go back and, what is this property zoned currently?
It's currently split-zoned R1 and open space. And they, and so what we proposed when the bill came in was for all R1 zoning. The landowner wants to go back to the split zoning, which from our perspective, the Office of Planning and Zoning's perspective, based on the fact that natural features are not part of the definition either of the planned land uses that support open space zoning, that there's a disconnect there.
And is the property, the portion of the property zoned R1 currently developed already?
This property does have improvements on it. I mean, this property is a little over an acre in size. I looked at the square footages because you need forty thousand square feet in an R1 zone to be able to subdivide. They don't have eighty thousand square feet of property. The property is already developed with a house and what I would consider to be outbuildings.
Okay.
So I don't think there is any further development potential for this property.
So this amendment would take the entire parcel to open space or keep or retain the split zoning?
Retain the split zoning.
Because if, so I think you're saying that the developable envelope is already hemmed in by natural features that probably wouldn't allow...
On this property, some of the development may actually be in the natural features, like it's possible that what's on this property now might not be readily developable, you know, if it were, if this were a completely vacant property.
Okay.
I mean, I understand what the property owners are saying in this area, because there are stream systems that run through like the backs of the properties, and there are some branches that come in.
Do you, I'm asking questions because you can, we can, this council could act, and then there could be some unintended consequences down the road, and the property... then there could be some unintended consequences down the road, and the property owner really won't have much of an option to fix them for another decade or so. So I'm just trying to understand what, do, do you think there are un, something unintended consequences that could be detrimental? Or is, I mean, it seems this is somewhat performative.
I think it's a, I think it's a little more academic. You know, this is about what the definitions are that were established during Plan Twenty Forty. If you look at the amendment, because we have to, we have to provide a justification. So in this case, we hang our hats on actual implementation strategies that are in Plan Twenty Forty, rather than the planned land use itself.
But the, the landowner, the current landowner has requested this amendment?
And they, and there are two more coming, and they all are sitting together. Like, two of them are side by side, and then the third one is, backs up. So they are, they are contiguous.
So would, would, would the landowner be able to put part of their property into conservation and achieve the same goal, and then be consistent with the land, with the...
They could.
Mr. Volkey, I'm sorry, I'm taking...
Thank you. So I just, I'll make this as a comment, and then I have a question, right? My comment is, this is my big concern about the whole planning process, right? And I recognize the job that you all in Office of Planning and Zoning have to do. You are planners, right? By, by the nature of your job, you look at a map and you say inconsistent in the area, consistency. We, as somebody described it to me one time, we don't like to see a little blip of red in a sea of blue, right? That's, to a planner, that's anathema. That's the idea of why is that? That doesn't make sense. But I think sometimes when you get down on the ground and you're actually there, sometimes you see it, we see it differently, the property owner may see it differently, and that's where I think we have to have that flexibility to be able to look at this. Part of what we're doing with Bill Twenty-six Twenty-four is to try to give us that flexibility as a council to do that without requirements that have become challenging. But with that as the backdrop, is there a distinction in their taxing based on whether part of this is split-zoned as OS versus R-one? Is there a distinction in the amount they pay for tax on the property taxes?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, I can't really answer that with a hundred percent certainty, because SDAT, the State Department of Assessments and Taxation, is the one who assesses property. In this situation, it's probably unlikely, but I can't say that with a hundred percent certainty, because that's not the role of the county to do.
Ms. Kenny, I'm sorry, it's unlikely that it, it would affect their tax assessment? Is that what you...
Based on some conversations that I've had with SDAT, just very generally, on a small parcel like this, it probably would be unlikely. But again, I can't say that with a hundred percent certainty, because they have to look at that property and, and assess, assess it based on the, what's there on the ground.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
I think Ms. Radveen was, was on before me.
Oh, Ms. Radveen.
Thank you. I think I know the answer to this question. This is kind of a follow-up to Ms. Pickard's question, and this is really for Councilman Smith. Has there been any conversation or any discussion by the landowner to put any sort of conservation easement in place? Because that would, if I'm understanding the definitions, you gave us a whole lot of information, but that would put it, like, more appropriately in the category that's proposed in this amendment. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And has that, has that been a discussion at all?
Not specifically, not with that landowner.
But it maybe could be?
Could, could be.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I think, I think for me, you said academic, right? You used that term, and if, from an academic standpoint, what I'm trying to do is codify, I, I don't want a landowner to have to go to the planning officer, or to have to come up with evidence to take the Board of Appeals. I want it to be what it is. It, it, we shouldn't put a burden on them to have to prove to stay what they are. It, it just, it just doesn't make sense. So, and I, and I get, this isn't, you know, a target on, on you all, because you, you all have been amazing during this whole process. But the system, right, too often, citizens have to work with the institution to change something, and then, and even in that instance, and in those cases, they have to come up with the burden of proof, to prove that they are, are what they are. And so what I'm trying to do is, it's, it's been that split sort of designation since, certainly since I've been in Anaronda County. I want to retain it, they want to retain it. It's a, it's a stamp on a map. We can wordsmith the language in the Plan Twenty Forty if need be, or even do conservation, but at least we have a designation that is, you know, constitutionally sort of stamped, because we as the council would, would make an appropriate designation of it. So I, I would certainly like to still move forward with the amendment and make that designation. Two cents.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Clarification from Mr. Smith. You've, you've effectively answered this, but just for the sake of the record, this is what the landowner wants.
One hundred percent.
Parks and open space will result in less density.
One hundred percent.
So for the record, me as the councilperson to address Mr. Volkey's concern, which I think was legitimate, wanting to make sure that these landowners don't have a problem down the line, for the record, I just want to say, I am going to support this amendment. I will vote yes. I, I know exactly what I am doing, and my vote is intentional.
Ms. Radveen?
Thank you. I think I'm probably going to support the amendment as well, but I'm, I just want to clarify, I'm not sure that that's correct, that it would result in lower density, because based on what you said, but Ms. Pampa, you said it, this property has basically maximized, maximized its buildable potential already.
I would characterize this property in the R-one as basically a single lot of record. It's a little over an acre in size. An acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. You need in R-one to subdivide eighty thousand square feet, and when you run the numbers out on this acreage, it's not eighty thousand. So they are, they have a little more property than they need in R-one, but they don't have enough to subdivide.
So is that, is it fair to say that the buildable potential is pretty much already maximized?
Maxed out.
Maxed out. I mean, maybe they could, you know, tear down the house and build a bigger house?
Yes.
But this wouldn't stop that, because they'll still have the R-one piece. Okay. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Nine to Bill Six Twenty-four.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Nine to Bill Six Twenty-four has been adopted.
And Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Seven to Bill Seven Twenty-four, which is the companion bill.
Amendment Number Seven. This amendment changes the zoning for a portion of the properties known as part of lots thirteen and fourteen, parcel two nineteen on Tax Map Seven, located on seventy-two forty-six Forest Avenue, Hanover, from R-one residential to OS open space.
Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Previous comments stand. Motion to adopt.
Sir.
Administration?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Basically same comments as the last one, although this property is bigger, and it does have subdivision potential. Potentially.
Isn't this the same property?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Oh, okay.
I got ahead of myself.
No, I, I understand. That's why my finger is right on my piece of paper here. Ms. Radveen?
But it would be really messed up if we didn't vote, having voted on the one we, I mean, we would be totally inconsistent, correct? So we'd need to vote for this.
So, you know, this is the, the first of a series of region plans that this council will be undertaking over the next three years. So our line of questioning may seem tedious to the audience, but we are all learning as well. So while it, it, split-zone properties are concerning, this one is not going to save us from the housing crisis. So Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Seven to Bill Seven Twenty-four.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Seven to Bill Seven Twenty-four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Ten to Bill Six dash twenty-four.
Amendment Number Ten, this amendment changes the planned land use for a portion of the property known as parcel one seventy-nine on Tax Map Seven, located on seventy-two thirty Forest Avenue, Hanover, from low-density residential to parks and open space.
Mr. Smith, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Same concept. Anytime you start a significant building process, it starts with one brick. And so this is, if this home and the adjacent property, at least for this area, for those that live in Jessup, and you're on that northern side of one seventy-five, there are numerous emails and or messages to me about flooding and things like that. So if this is a way to put a pause and to mitigate any future growth there, certainly for the next ten years, then I think it's, it's the right thing to do for that area specifically. So motion to adopt.
Second.
Does the Administration have any comments on Amendment Number Ten?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. My comments for this are very similar to what I said for the one before. This property is larger. It's in the seven acre range. So it does, it theoretically has subdivision potential.
And this is also owner-driven as well, so the property owners are on board with this change.
Ms. Hummer?
Looking at one of the maps, it looks like this one does have more, has some structures already on it.
This property has a house, I believe, a garage, a barn. It has pasture for horses. So there are a number of improvements on this property.
It's split-zoned as well?
Yeah.
R-one, open space.
Did you have a follow-up question? So when, so when properties are split-zoned, if this is to retain its open space on a certain portion, I am, full disclosure, not looking at the map. And the property owner were to go to sell this property, what, what can or can't be done in the portion of the property that's open space?
Well, the open space zoning is one of the most restrictive zoning categories that we have in the county. You cannot build new structures in the open space. What is permitted in open space zoning is existing structures. So this property, which I believe is in the neighborhood of seven acres, so when you run the R-one numbers, let's say you could roughly get seven lots out of it, that open space zoning is going to reduce the amount of area that would be developable. So in essence, the property owner is kind of de facto asking for conservation on their property.
Thank you. This has been moved and seconded, correct?
Yes, I have another question.
Ms., Ms. Hummer?
So if this, this portion is zoned to open space, and they have existing structures on there, they can maintain those structures, but with open space, they would not be able to build, add on to those structures, or do a, you know, further improvements? What's the limitation on there for existing things once it's open space?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, I can't answer that for sure without the code in front of me. I'm not sure whether they would have any ability to build anything there. Thank you.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. In this case, the house, it would actually be retained in the R-one portion. And if you look at the topography on this property, they actually have a stream that runs through the property. It kind of divides the house from the pasture and the barn area. Most of the outbuildings or the farm buildings are, or at least some portion of them, are in the area that is proposed to be zoned open space, but not the house.
Mr. Volkey?
I think, this is Amendment Ten, right, to Bill Six Twenty-four, so it's really a four-acre parcel. We, we, that's what I'm seeing, at least in the amendment, the exhibit I two. But in there, so would this one have an impact with SDAT?
So that is the change area.
Ah, got you. So the entire parcel is, there's three acres outside of the, got you. Okay. So with that, would these four acres, again to my tax question, do we think that might have an impact? Like, part of what I'm seeing is, and why I think some of these property owners may want to keep their current zoning, is because they have a concern that if they go up in density, they're going to see a greater tax bill. I've heard that from people in my district. So when we get there, we're not there yet.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, as I said before, again, I can't answer for SDAT. I think this one may be a little bit different than the last one we talked about, because it is larger. So there could be more of a concern, especially if you are going from a split-zone, R-one, to open space, and then zoning the whole entire property R-one. SDAT would, would look at that and determine whether there's any further subdivision potential there. It has to be, based on my discussions with them, very obvious that there is further potential there before they would just assess it as something that would have an additional home site. But I, I understand the concern there, especially when you have a larger site.
Thank you. The, the SDAT question, I think, is going to keep, keep rearing its head. I'm wondering how this council can get a little more information about that. To be continued. Is there a way that we can, I mean, would, would, would a property not be assessed until it was actually improved, or...
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, that's right. It's, it's, properties are assessed on a three-year cycle, so they're only assessed every three years, so it's not even automatic if there was a zoning. You know, again, I had a discussion with somebody over there at SDAT when this was brought up at the work session about a month ago, and, you know, they do say that they get a lot of questions like this, so they're happy to talk about a specific property, because it's hard for them to give a one-size-fits-all type answer, because every property is different. And, you know, they really have to go out there and look at the property to say yes or no, that a zoning would, would affect the assessment or not.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion on Amendment Number Ten to Bill Six dash twenty-four? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Ten.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Ten to Bill Six dash twenty-four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Eight to Bill Seven dash twenty-four.
Amendment Number Eight, this amendment changes the zoning for a portion of the property known as parcel one seventy-nine on Tax Map Seven, located on seventy-two thirty Forest Avenue, Hanover, from R-one residential to OS open space.
Mr. Smith, this is the companion amendment to the one we just addressed. You have the floor.
Previous comments stand. Motion to adopt.
Would the Administration like to comment? I'm going to give you that, just to say ditto. That's good. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Eight to Bill Seven dash twenty-four.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Eight to Bill Number Seven dash twenty-four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Eleven to Bill Six dash twenty-four.
Amendment Number Eleven, this amendment changes the planned land use for a portion of the property known as parcel two seven seven on Tax Map Seven, located on seventy-one ninety-nine Ohio Avenue, Hanover, from low-density residential to parks and open space.
Mr. Smith, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is that third property that we referenced earlier, and motion to adopt.
Would the Administration like to comment on Amendment Number Eleven?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. This is a similar situation to the last two properties that you've considered, and our comments are the same.
Ms. Hummer?
Yes. So it says that this, just a definitional question here, to change it to OS, parks and open space, does that mean that at a future time, perhaps this land could be acquired and turned into a public park, under, based on that zoning?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I, I don't believe so, but, I mean, anything is possible.
Just because it has parks in the name, I'm, you know, curious if that gave it a further, you know, edge toward becoming a public park space or something. So, okay.
No, and we have had in other cases where we proposed, let's say, parks and open space, or let's say conservation planned land use and open space zoning, we had, where it was private property, residents were not in favor of that, because they felt that just having the name open having the name open space zoning made it appear that it was public. There's, you know, I'm sorry, this, there are people on both sides of this. It just depends on what the situation is.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I know there's some other lights, but do you mind if I, would you be so kind as to let me jump the line?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you.
Ms. Radvian?
Thank you. Just because this has come up, I think one of the things that's, causes confusion is the name parks, like you said, parks and open space, and then there's program open space. So we use open space in two totally different ways. Program open space would indeed be public space, which is totally different from the zoning open space. Probably they weren't talking to each other when they gave them the same name, basically the same name, but I think that's where a lot of the confusion arises.
Mr. Volkey?
Question, it's a, sort of a procedural question. When we have these, and there are sort of budding properties like this, where you've got one on one side of the street, then the other side, and they're all relatively contiguous, would it be appropriate to block vote these, the amendments, to speed this up?
You said block vote?
Yeah. How, how we do block voting, where we like, put all the amendments together and vote on them, so we could explain it all at once, and then we could vote on three different amendments at one time without having to go parcel by parcel. Would that be an acceptable way to go through this, or do we actually have to vote individually every single amendment?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, I, I think you can block vote them. The reason that they're separated out is because of the signs and, you know, having to make sure that every property owner has posted that sign before you can go forward, but sure, I think that we could look at block voting them, especially if we get more like those that are grouped together.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I was going to say briefly, I think, certainly with some of the other region teams that come up that have much more waterway access than I do, you may encounter situations where you're going to have dozens of properties that are similar, and so it makes sense to even have that question answered.
This council is accustomed to doing blocks of votes during budget. It's something we might want to revisit during comp zoning. It's just something we need to consider when we do it, when we make the announcement, how we read things in, so my finger is still on amendment number 11. Are we ready to vote?
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 11 to bill 624. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 11 to bill number 6-24 has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 9 to bill 7-24.
Amendment number 9. This amendment changes the zoning for a portion of the property known as parcel 277 on tax map 7, located on 7199 Ohio Avenue, Hanover, from R1 residential to OS parks and open space.
This is your amendment, Mr. Smith, the companion?
This is companion bill to the previous one that we just voted on, so motion to adopt.
Second.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I'm just going to ditto my previous comments.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 9 to bill 7-24. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number, or 9 to bill 7-24 has been adopted.
So this is a, we could have, potentially, if we had the foresight, taken all six of those together in a block. I think that was what you were, something for us to consider as we move forward in the future. With that in mind, Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 10 to bill 724.
Amendment number 10. This amendment changes the zoning for a property known as part of lots 12 and 39, parcel 265 on tax map 13, located on 2874 Jessup Road, Jessup, from C1 local commercial to SB small business.
Mr. Smith?
This is a different circumstance. There's a corner lot here, where obviously in the comp zoning process, it was designated to go to C1, having communicated with, and I, I honestly thought I tried my best to reach out and communicate with every community and homeowner in this area, a portion of Region 2, and, and I would think the legislation that I'm presenting today has the full endorsement from every owner of those properties. In the future, certainly on May 1st, there may be a couple of properties that, you know, weren't so advantageous when it came to, but my goal is to keep the zoning low usage in that area until we address the water issues. Race Road has a very narrow road. I know many of these, these homeowners are impacted by Race Road, and I would, I would venture to say that every one of these amendments that we voted on tonight, that everyone that's here from that area would support them. Who would not, from that Jessup area, not support these amendments? Who's, just bush your hand, just curious. Right, I don't, I don't think anyone is against them. So I say that to say that I definitely did my homework on these amendments and tried to make sure that the Jessup, JIA, as well as the homeowner associations were on board with these, and this is one of those, those corner areas that we want to try to keep small business to create a buffer, is probably the term that I want to use when it comes to this amendment, between the residential areas that are north of this property and 175. And so there was an intent to go to C1, some more, and I get it, it certainly is a busy road. 175 is not a rural road anymore, I'll say that publicly. However, that doesn't mean the homeowners who are there and have been there for, for many, many decades should have to live in an environment that's constantly impacting them, and the, the traffic, as well as the water, are certainly two issues that I can attest and say that they are valid, and will try my best to help them remediate any of those concerns. So, motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
The administration like to comment on amendment number 10 to bill 724.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I think Mr. Smith covered it. I mean, this is a change from C1 to SB, which is a fairly small change.
Is there any comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call, oh, short, yep, Ms. Radvian?
Do you know, is the, is the property currently operated in a commercial, is it a commercial use currently?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I can't, I can't confirm whether or not that's true. I did see the photos that they submitted, and it looks like it's a house to me, but there is some parking pad up front, so, I mean, it could be running a home business. I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
That's, small business, it's, I think what would be a disadvantage to the community is if, C1 has, opens up many more uses to that, and if we get one more gas station on that intersection, I, I think they're going to shoot me. So if we can prevent Royal, I'm not, I don't want to say, I don't want to say the name because I don't want to buy it, but there's like four gas stations within like a half mile, if that, if a half, maybe a quarter mile. It may be a quarter mile and there are four gas stations. So no more gas stations right there. Let's just keep it what it is and retain the beauty and serenity of that community.
Mr. Smith, will, pulling this property to small business, will it, will it be, it won't?
It won't be a gas station.
But it won't be in non-conforming use?
No, it will not be in the non-conforming use. It'll, it'll be, it's fine.
Okay, because that will be a problem for the property owner if it's?
Correct.
If we put it into non-conforming use, okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 10. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 10 to bill 7-24 has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 12 to bill 6-24.
Amendment number 12. This amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as parcel 68 on tax map 13, located on 2820 Jessup Road and 2822 Jessup Road, Jessup, from commercial to residential.
Mr. Smith, your amendment, you have the floor.
I think this is that intersection of 175 and 295, 2822?
Yes, and Race Road. Race, 295, 175.
So this is a, now there is, there is some higher usage adjacent to it. The northern part is residential, and this property is, is, the plan was for it to go to C1, but the homeowners actually want to retain it as residential, and I'm on board with that as well, again, to create those buffers so that a higher, a higher usage activity does not occur at that intersection. I know, I don't know if the property owner is here, but motion to adopt.
Second.
The administration like to weigh in on this amendment?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So there are two small parcels on either side of this that would remain commercial, but there is R1 behind this, so it is going to join existing R1. So it's not going to be like a reverse spot zoning. So we're, we're okay with it.
Okay. Any other discussion on amendment number 12 to bill 6-24? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 12 to 6-24. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 12 to bill 6-24 has been adopted. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 11 to bill 7-24.
Amendment number 11. This amendment changes the zoning for the property known as parcel 68 on tax map 13, located on 2820 Jessup Road and 2822 Jessup Road, Jessup, from C1 local commercial to R1 residential.
Mr. Smith?
This is a companion bill, motion to adopt.
Second.
The administration?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. We have the same comments we had on the previous amendment.
Thank you. This is the companion amendment. Is there any further discussion from my colleagues? Just when, when we're getting in the groove, it's all over. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 11 to bill 7-24. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 11 to bill 7-24 has been adopted. Okay, now, my notes tell me that was the last amendments for bill 6 and 7, correct? So both bill number 6-24 as amended and bill number 7-24 as amended will be heard on May 1st, 2024.
Madam Chair, can I, I know there were some, if I may?
Yes.
And I'll be brief. I know there are some additional properties that did not meet the signage requirement, so if you didn't see those, as I stated earlier, the intent is to address those on May 1st, but I will disclose those and push those out here, certainly by tomorrow, because they're all, I think they're all captured. So for those that are interested about, interested in what that change will look like, it is a continuation of creating that buffer or that, that 175 piece, I think that's the bulk of the amendments that will come on May 1st. So just wanted to put that up.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of bill number 8-24 as amended and bill number 9-24.
Bill number 824, An Ordnance Concerning General Development Plan, Region 7 Plan. Bill number 924, An Ordnance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region 7.
This is an administration bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration with me at the table, Christina Pampa and Patrick Hughes from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. Bill 824 and 924 are Region 7. Happy to answer any questions or go straight to the public hearing.
Is there any discussion on these bills before we open the joint public hearing? Seeing none, we'll now open the joint public hearing on bills number 8-24 and 9-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received 16 pieces of written testimony, which have been added to the record, shared, and are also posted on the website.
I do have some people signed up ahead of time. When I call your name, please come to the table, have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. At this time, I have, I can't see my computer. I have Stephanie Schulman, Michael Snellgrove, John Lagritaria, Nancy Guy, and Jesse Iliff. Ms. Schulman?
Hi. Good evening, I'm Steffi Schulman, and I've lived in Lyndemore for 43 years. I'm asking you at this time to delay all zoning decisions regarding the Weems Creek corridor. There was to be a comprehensive plan. Whether we call this a village sector plan or a sector plan, I doubt any citizen in the area can describe the specific goals of these plans. I wonder if any of you on the council can give me specifics. I even wonder if there are specifics. Should we need a name, I think we should call it the Public Sector Plan. With the remaining, with that name, the county can reach out more aggressively to the citizens to find out what we want. Region 7 has 78,000 voting citizens. Most of these citizens have not been adequately communicated with when it comes to the proposed zoning changes. The plan is found on the internet, has not been updated with proposed amendments. One has to dig and cross-reference other sources to ferret out information. We should not have to do this. County paperwork should be more easily accessed and publicized. The lack of transparency and communication has led to distrust and rumors. Without trust, there cannot be growth. The Region 7 planning papers stated on pages 48 and 49 that we would be actively involved through the community meetings and small group discussions and continued community involvement. It is obvious that there has not been enough communication with our community. I have a few questions that are also part of the 7, Region 7 Plan of paperwork. What are the results of your infrastructure strutters, studies? What is going to happen with water, sewer, traffic, and the environment? Have these studies been done? Can we read them? How can zoning changes be approved in a vacuum? Again, I ask the county council to delay any and all changes to the Weems Creek corridor until a more comprehensive plan can be proposed, discussed, and agreed upon. I hope that the county council can agree that there are many, many more questions than there are answers when it comes to the development of the Weems Creek community. Development is inevitable, but it should not be done behind closed doors or dead-end streets. The minority in this case, the owners of 16 properties, should not have more sway with you than us, your voting constituents.
Thank you, Ms. Schulman. Mr. Snellgrove?
My name is Michael Snellgrove, and my address is 1914 Sleepy Hollow Lane. I wanted to come today to speak in favor of adding the sector plan back to the Region 7 Plan for Ridgely Avenue Community. First off, I also wanted to say a big thank you to you and to the other residents of, of the community for not including commercial upzoning or residential high-density in the Region 7 Plan for Ridgely. We have absolutely no desire to see this in the community, and it's, that's very important to me, and I'm actually grateful that's not what we're here to discuss today. As we look ahead, as a resident of Lyndemore, I have a strong desire to be part of an open process for, for the future of this community, and it's belief, my belief that, like Steph, something like a sector plan would be the best approach for this. I'd really love to hear and be much more involved in a robust process that actually looks at and gives us some sort of information on environmental considerations, proper plans to improve pedestrian safety, ways to encourage vitalization along that avenue, and also something that gets a broader view of perspective on the future of Ridgely. I don't want Ridgely to be based on a property-by-property rezoning that slowly takes place over the next decade. And while I applaud the efforts so far to prevent a large-scale commercial or dense commercial development, I don't want to lose the sector plan or some robust planning as collateral damage. Again, I want something like a sector plan. I also wanted to apologize, I may be a resident, if I'm lucky, for a Ridgely community for the next 50 years, and it shouldn't have taken what I think turned out to be some extreme views within the, within the community for me to come here and speak, but better late than never. On my behalf, I just wanted to ask, please add the sector plan or something like that back to the future for the Ridgely community. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Lagritaria?[1767.51] Mr. Lagritaria. I tried.
Up until 18 months ago, I had never attended a council meeting. Shame on me. I've since done as much as I can to correct that. Excuse me. At my first council meeting, I learned that a small contingent wanted to disrupt a little corner of the world by developing multiple properties along the Ridgely corridor. So I went into protect mode and fought back, as did many of my neighbors. The more meetings I attended, the more I realized I didn't know. Since then, I've researched county documents, spoken with several stakeholders and persons that have been affected similarly from other regions around the Annapolis area, trying to gain an understanding of the process, which, by the way, is extremely complicated, as we all know. Perhaps it took longer for me to realize the most, but I now recognize that this council, and Ms. Rodbien in particular, do in fact have our best interests at heart. Unfortunately, I couldn't see the forest for the trees. Make no mistake, I still adamantly believe that protecting our wildlife and the bay is paramount, is critical to the balance of nature. In business, we have a saying, if you're not moving forward even slowly, then you're going to get run over. I believe the same is ultimately true for the Ridgely corridor. The area will evolve whether we like it or not. With that said, I vehemently oppose any bill that requests upzoning on Willow Road, Ridgely corridor, et cetera, and I feel the final recommended draft plan that the SAC worked on diligently and the OPZ shared is the best opportunity for us to ensure the least amount of environmental impact and the best opportunity to maintain the charm and small-town feel of our area. The overriding concern that I have, and I believe all of my neighbors share, is that we want transparency and a voice when it comes to how the neighborhood evolves. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Guy.
Hi, hold on, please. Hi, my name is Nancy Guy, 605 North Best Gate Road. I'm opposing Bill 8-24 and 9-24. The Region 7 Plan must change and remove all references to the Village Center Sector Plan. In addition, the county council must amend the bill to specifically state that they are not adopting any part of the Village Center Sector Plan, including, example, Strategy Number 2 on Page 78, 79 of the Region 7 Plan. It is not smart growth to develop what is largely a green field. This is a low-density residential, R2 neighborhood preservation area, and should remain that way. In addition, the plan does not support the environmental goals of the community. I oppose developing the Weems Creek and Ridgely Avenue and its surrounding areas, for they do not have public sewer and nor is, and none is planned and does not have adequate water pressure. The county has plenty of unutilized area, already developed area with adequate public facilities, including the Annapolis Mall, parole town center, where revitalization and development must be focused. The fiscal note for Bill 8-24 and 9-24 does not acknowledge development costs that already require taxpayers' funding for infrastructure and services such as public sewer and water, and also for improvement with schools, fire, and safety protection. I ask the county council to please oppose this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Iliff.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council, for listening to me tonight. I'm here on behalf of the Severn River Association. My name is Jesse Iliff. I'm executive director. We're at 7076 Bembee Beach Road in Annapolis. Specifically, we oppose the upzoning of properties at Willow Road and elsewhere along the Ridgely Avenue corridor. The reasons, I think, we share with many of the community members that you've heard already on this proposal many times, but I wanted to come tonight to add another layer, which is that in 2022, the Severn River Association received federal funding to perform a watershed assessment of the overall Severn River and identify those watersheds within it that are most in need of restoration and protection. And our federally well-known consultants, in coordination with relevant communities, found that Weems Creek was the number-one priority watershed for restoration on the Severn River. And as many of you have heard already, the Ridgely corridor largely drains into Weems Creek. And so for that reason, because Severn River Association is preparing to invest lots of taxpayer money from all levels of government into the restoration and protection of this watershed, we feel that it is imprudent to be upzoning the area and paving the way for commercial developments which will increase impervious surfaces and pollutant loadings to the creek. So I wanted to come and let you know that there are efforts underway currently to preserve this area, and we feel that the anticipated development would be antithetical to those objectives in that investment. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone in the audience remaining wishing to speak on Bill 8-24 or 9-24? You may come up. We're going to start here on the end. Sir, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Hello, I'm Britt Griswold. I live at 823 Holly Drive East, Annapolis, Maryland, 21409. I'm actually up here because of what was talked about previously, which is the split zoning. I think you're going to see more issues with this as this process goes on. In my particular area, which I'll talk about when we get to Region 4, we have that issue in abundance. It's wherever you find environmentally sensitive areas that the county administration decided it's easier just to zap it is one thing. You basically are talking about taking open space, turning it into R1, and that, I believe, in areas where you have 7, 8, 10, 15 acres of land where part of it was open space, you've now made it all R1. I believe you've increased the potential development in that area that was not previously there because of the larger R1 quota. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. So that wasn't about Bills 8 or 9?
Well, only in that...
Okay, it's okay. We'll move on.
Only in that Region 7 is basically all watershed around creeks. They're going to run into the same issues if they've taken their zoning and split.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes. Yes, ma'am.
Already?
It is.
My name is Judy Weagle. I live on Willow Road. Hardly anybody lives on Willow Road anymore because it got taken over by the state highway to improve Route 5301. Maybe that's why people want to turn it commercial, because when Route 5301 needs to be improved again, they'll get more money for the land taken. I don't know. But I came here tonight, and I was going to just have a moment of silence for my road where I grew up, where I planted trees, where I saved the squirrels from the tear-down of the houses on my road, and I rescued the plants, the daffodils, et cetera, that were in my neighbor's yard, and have watched things change. And now I come to county council, and I see there's an amendment to have Willow Road property changed to commercial. And I hear you, Mr. Smith, talk about buffers. What am I, where am I, what buffer do I have? It just, it just does not work. And the other thing I wanted to say is, there's a map here that says where Mr. Kraus has posted signs, and he includes a plat of his property, and it's wrong. This is not the lot lines. You cannot pass this as is. It is wrong. Patrick Hughes said, well, you have to prove that it's wrong. I go, well, I just didn't come prepared tonight to do that. But you want to make a big mistake? Go ahead. But that's one reason to delay this work on this bill. Thank everyone for their effort. I feel sustained. I just want to, you know, live my life as I started out.
Thank you. Ma'am, we're going to go right down the road. State your name and address for the record, and you have the floor. You have two minutes.
I'm Kate Mahood, business owner and citizen. My address, 510 Paffill Road. I spent 25 years in a successful career before I was in health care in historic preservation. I worked with the state historic preservation office, taught local governments, private nonprofits, and organizations like that how to save their neighborhoods. With this experience, I volunteered with the SAC for Region 7. We met with nine other great volunteers and created the idea of the sector plan as a way to protect Ridgely area. And to listen, we listened, we offered insights, and gave our guidance to help protect the area. As a committee, we recommended the sector plan unanimously and as a way to save it. I wonder what I might say to get the council to reverse its recent actions that are cutting that out of the plan. We need the sector plan. The current preservation, conservation, and protection of our resources will not happen if it's based on current code and zoning. Since my last visit, we've lost massive trees. We've lost, we've seen large fences put up that aren't supposed to be where they are. We watched as neighbors innocently improved their properties and paved their long driveways that fill into the Cove of Cork. We have seen bills that I think were approved to change setbacks in parts of our area that allow larger structures, more lighting, more sound, more, you know, everything. And demolition of historic resources by neglect is still happening. So current C2 zoning allows new purchasers of the 645 and 647 properties, for example, to build all sorts of different things, Dunkin' Donuts, you name it, can, other companies can come in. And, you know, oh, no. It's true.
Thank you.
Well, my point is, please save the sector plan, and it can lead to a lot of positive things.
Thank you.
That I didn't get to tell you, so.
Thank you. Ms. Guy, you have the floor. Two minutes.
Thank you. Dorothy Guy, 605 North Best Gate Road. I'm here tonight to oppose Amendments 5 and 6 to 824. These amendments are seriously misguided. As I've stated before, I oppose all upzoning in the Weems Creek-Ridgely Avenue area. The amendment that would put back the sector plan would also put back the Village Center. That's not what we want on Ridgely Avenue and in the Weems Creek area. This area is not fit for development. It has no public sewer. It has a lot of natural areas left. It's obvious, the only thing this council wants to do is to pave over every last square inch of Anorondal County. Ms. Mahood here didn't tell you that she really represents the developer Ted Kraus and rents from him and is the source of the hideous drumming circle noise the other week? The digital zoning layer must be consistent with the Region 7 Plan. I'm afraid that it's probably not. I agree with Ms. Schulman's comments made earlier tonight, and the person who wants revitalization along Ridgely Avenue and Weems Creek will get nothing but serious commercial development. I oppose the change to change the planned land use from low-density residential to commercial in this area as presented in an amendment tonight. This is ridiculous. You're going to develop the entire Annapolis Mall area and turn it into another south-of-50 parole area. You'll have high-rise density buildings there. Don't trash Ridgely Avenue and Weems Creek, too. You'll ruin the entire area. This is a nice, quiet area, and you'll only bring a lot of problems to this area by developing it. And the people who think otherwise are seriously, seriously, seriously misguided.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is... Right for red light.
My name is Owen Smith. I'm at 516 Riverview Court. I live in the Ridgely area because of that, and I can describe myself apparently as misguided. I would like to say that what I see here today in the amendments and everything else, with a few exceptions, has been a triumph of civility. The last two years have heard a uncivil minority at times monopolize conversation, and I know that that is difficult in the public arena to manage, and I appreciate all the work that has gone in between all of my neighbors. The neighborhood has a complicated history because of the trauma of Route 50 coming through. There's many families that are multiple generations there, and frankly, as someone who has lived there now for four years but has five households in the neighborhood that are family members of mine, direct family members of mine, I see that there are a lot of missed opportunities for placemaking and community making. And I look forward to the sector planning process being a place where this neighborhood, with its unique challenges, is actually able to come together with the resources that this room represents and mend some of the ad hominem attacks and relationships that have been fallout from, I think, a lot of mistrust in the neighborhood. Judy, for example, had a great bus at one time that used to produce produce for the entire neighborhood. I would love, at some point, to see that bus refurbished and have a farmer's market in my neighborhood on the corner. I mean, you know, the house across the street from me had a mechanic shop in its basement. It's R1 now. And they made, the wife made wedding cakes for people that now have grandkids. You know, I think there's a lot of opportunity in our neighborhood. There's a lot of mistrust. I think there's a lot of disagreement about what particular things mean, and that's in part because we don't have the community that I wish we had, and I look forward to building community through the resources that you guys are going to grant us through this process. And I hope that Willow Road retains its residential character.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is... My name is Kevin Sullivan. I live at 7 Cumberland Court, Annapolis, Maryland. I also own property on Ridgely Avenue and Old Riverview Avenue. I've been there for 35 years in the Ridgely Avenue corridor. And I went through today, and I looked at all the development that is there right now. It's not comprehensive. I went through the two-year process with Patrick Hughes and the zoning people and the commission that was assigned by the county. It was excellent. We all talked about what we wanted to do. The zoning, planning, and zoning professionals came through with a really nice plan. The village development on Riverview Avenue is appropriate. There's three houses on there. They're hammered in between boatyard, a plumbing business, a restaurant, and their parking lots. That needs to change. I own one of those properties. Trucks came through, knocked down my fence. Luckily, no one was hurt, but there was damage. Ridgely Avenue from the 500 block all the way up to North Best Gate is nothing but a hodgepodge of zoning now. You can't build community like that. Most of the houses are next to a commercial property. That's really inappropriate, and what the planning and zoning professionals have done for the county is really the proper way to look at that gateway into the capital of Maryland. What it is now, it was lovely, and it was nice properties to live in, but it needs to be upgraded. It needs to be adjusted to modern things, and I'm sure that there will be plumbing put in all those homes. You talk about leaching into the...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone else in the audience prepared to speak on Bills 824 and 924? Please come to the table at this time. Please come to the table at this time. On a different bill? Oh, thank you. Sir, are we going to go this way? Because you have the floor.
Yeah, Dave Cordy, 1863 Lyndemore Drive. Thanks for letting me come back, and thank you for all your work. I am also, actually, I'm not willing to accept that I'm misguided. Been a long process. I've been involved in a lot of it. First, very quickly, there's two amendments, 1 to 824, 1 to 924, which would ask for upzoning on the properties you've heard about on Willow Road. And just check your notes, and I think you'll realize nobody wants that. In terms of the sector plan, I want to thank Ms. Rogan for considering introducing that back as a way to open things up. And I, at the last meeting, expressed why I thought that might be a good idea, and I have submitted written testimony, expanding on that a little bit. But I just, I want to say that one of the pieces of this is I can almost understand why the OPZ would sort of throw up their hands and say, "I'm not sure that community's worth going through all this effort and putting all of our work into it, given that the resistance and the disinformation and the drudgacy and so forth they've experienced." And I have had an opportunity to speak with a number of people in the community, and I really think there is a core of people who are willing to participate cordially, openly, understandably, and actually working to try to make Ridgely better. And so, please don't dismiss that, just based on some of what you've heard. Thank you.
Sir, state your name and address. You have the floor.
Mark Camino, again, 2383 Terrapin Crossing, Jessup. I'd like to highlight the gentleman that said on the end there about, you know, a hodgepodge of rezoning. This is my wife's and I's fourth home. We grew up in the Midwest, and we grew up in an area not too different from the topographical structure here called Lake County, Illinois. Lots and lots of lakes and rivers and streams and swampy areas. And when there was rezoning discussions very similar to here, what we ended up moving into an area that was originally almost swampy. "Oh, we're going to raise all the homes up. We're going to do all these things." And the problem they ran into is what we're hearing many times in here repeatedly. The infrastructure is not there to handle the flow of the water, and the topography here is similar there, where the water's designed to go to certain places, but it's too much clay, so the water can't really move. It doesn't percolate, is what all the developers say. It'll percolate, it'll take care of it. It won't. So, without the infrastructure physically designed to move the water away from the development, all of these bills, including this one, are going to continue to fail.
Thank you. Hi, Mary Guy, 605 North Best Gate Road. We've been involved in the process through, I won't say throughout, because the initial contact with the community was very limited. It consisted of a postcard and a meeting in 2021 that was held at the atrium. And since then, there have been very poor announcements that have gone out to all of the residents and so forth. I don't even know what hap, as you all know, what happens in one area impacts others, not just those people who live seven feet away or 100 feet away or contiguously, but it affects the immediate area, the intermediate area, and all the regional areas. We remain adamantly opposed to the village sector, the sector plan, and upzoning. And I cannot submit any of them, support any of the amendments that are mentioned here. 16 comments received via the last week doesn't mean to me that you need to start pulling back on things that were promised before as in no sector plan and no village center. People who want to pursue development, commercial interests, and members of the county council should be redirected to protect, conserve, preserve, and consider the long-term negative impact on the environment, the residents, the properties, et cetera. Please do not destroy this area that's remained relatively undisturbed for many years. The medical center in Ridgely Oaks were an exception, and they should not become the rule. This is a residential, not a community, excuse me, not a commercial community. Figure 4 in the Development Policy Area shows the area's neighborhood preservation, no exceptions. Figure 5 shows the area's low residential density, and that should also be abided by. This is not a gateway to the capital. This is a little one-way road, each way, that's it. It's not a major thoroughfare. It'll never be a major thoroughfare. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Melanie Arena, 1879 Loose Creek Drive. I have to agree with a lot of the people that are saying communication just wasn't and hasn't been great. These are all my neighbors. Some of them I've talked to on the street. A lot of, even just today, I talked to one of them. She didn't really know what was going on. She just had heard rumors, which is never good. So, I think communication is key. I'm doing my best to try and fill them in and be impartial, but I think one of the biggest problems, well, infrastructure, of course, because there are a handful of us that have city and a handful, well, more so, I think, wells in Lyndemore and Loose Creek Drive. So, infrastructure is what I'm hearing from neighbors, but also the fact that a lot of the area they're talking about right now is, well, it's trying to be small business now, but it's residential. The same person owns most of those, and for those to go from small business to commercial and taller buildings, it's going to be easy for him if he can get in because he owns that whole section. I want to say it's seven in a row houses. So, I think that's our concern. If it is going to be developed, I think you've heard it from several people, that we want to be in on it. This is so beloved. And you heard Judy talk about Willow Road, and I just met her a few weeks ago, and this is really sad to hear about her and Glenn, who's a disabled person, both been offered by this same person to buy their properties at below value. And that infuriates me. So, I just, it's a very big deal to all of us. We're very passionate, and we know you have a really hard job, but please, please, let us be a part of it if it's going to happen.
Thank you. The public hearings on Bill 8-24 and Bill 9-24 are now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bill 824 as amended and 924.
Bill Number 824, An Ordnance Concerning General Development Plan, Region 7 Plan. Bill Number 924, An Ordnance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region 7.
Okay. Like Bills 624 and 724, we will tackle amendments back and forth. Madam Secretary, did you want to read your statement?
The signs were posted and the certification was received for the corresponding amendment that the council will introduce this evening.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 4 to Bill 8-24.
Amendment Number 4. This technical amendment corrects erroneous or missing words in the Region 7 plan.
This is a county executive technical amendment. You have the floor, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would urge the council to adopt this amendment. Don't like that erroneous words or missing words. Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt? Rat?
Second.
Is there any discussion on Amendment Number 4 to Bill 824? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 4.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 4 to Bill Number 8-24 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 5 to Bill 824.
Amendment Number 5. This amendment changes the planned land use for the properties known as Parcels 158 and 159 on tax map 45H located at No. No. Willow Road and 2 Willow Road, Annapolis, from low-density residential to commercial.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, we've heard a lot of testimony about this particular amendment. This is the parcel that, but some other small-business-zoned properties that are on Ridgely. This is technically on Willow Road, but it is the end of that strip of small-business-zoned properties. Originally, the property owner had come in seeking commercial zoning for this entire area. They abandoned that when they realized that that was not going to be recommended by planning and zoning staff. At this point, they are asking that the last piece of property there that is at the end of that strip, that that be taken from residential zoning to SB zoning, so small business, which we know is a transitional zone. This first amendment, which is Amendment Number 5 to Bill 824, is what changes the land use underlying that property. And then the corresponding amendment, which is Amendment Number 2 to Bill 9-24, that would actually change the zoning designation. So, with that, I have had an opportunity to review the property, and I can tell you that, at certain points, that property has been used in a small-business or commercial sense. I have a copy of the 1977 Annapolis City Directory, which shows that that property was, at that time, Southern Maryland Employee Federal Credit Union, it looks like maybe it was a telephone center. And then, in the 1986 version of the City of Annapolis Directory, it was also still being used as a Southern Maryland Federal Credit Union. So, there is some history to this property being used in a way that was not exclusively residential. I believe this continues the stretch of small-business zoning that is in that area, and it's consistent. So, with that, I would move the amendment.
Is there a second?
Fiedler, second.
This is not a rally. This is a business meeting. We're going to keep decorum in the chambers, please. Would the administration like to comment on this amendment?
Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. During the Office of Planning and Zoning's comprehensive zoning process, there were a number of applications that came in looking for C2 along this Ridgely Avenue corridor. The Office of Planning and Zoning had recommended that the existing zoning in the area be maintained. Now, on these two small properties totaling about 28,000 square feet, the property owner here has come in and asked for small-business zoning. While we do think that small business may be more in scale with the neighborhood than commercial zoning, we also do note with Pearl Town Center right down the street, there's not a strong need for additional commercial zoning at this time along the corridor. And that's all we have.
So, you say you were for, or was the administration for the amendment or against it?
I'd say we're pretty neutral.
Okay.
I mean, you know, we've been...
No, that's perfect. You're good.
We've been in this process, we had our February 6, 2023, meeting in the community, and from that point on, we've had residents from this area coming to all the stakeholder advisory committees and coming to the planning advisory board, now coming to the county council. And we know that there are a lot of mixed feelings about this area. You know, you just heard tonight, a group of people get up and support a sector plan. Others have strongly said they don't want it. So, we're going to go more neutral on this one.
And you're worth every penny the county is paying for you. I just want you to know, I'm just saying. You are amazing assets. I do know it's, I do want to hear from the representative of the area that this, is that Ms. Rodvian's district? If that's possible.
Yeah, thank you. I was about to chime in, so you were reading my mind. I just want to say, on behalf of the community, who I think has made it very clear that they're, that at least, I feel like the majority of the voices that I have heard do not support upzoning on Ridgely Avenue. And I think the recommendation in the original plan, as was submitted to the council, as was introduced to the council, that left this as residential zoning, has the most broad approval of the communities and the neighbors involved. So, I ask my colleagues to vote down Amendment 5.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure I'm understanding these two amendments collectively. So, the land use is commercial, zoning, small business. What can take place on the property would be dictated by the zoning code of, in this proposal, small business.
Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. That's correct.
Okay. And then, one more question, if I may?
Of course.
Madam Chair? So, if I'm looking at this map, it appears that properties to the northwest, we'll call it, are small-business zone, and properties to the southeast are R2. Just confirming.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding Amendment Number 5 to Bill 824? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 5 to Bill 824.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment Number 5 to Bill Number 8-24 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2 to Bill 9-24.
Amendment Number 2. This amendment changes the zoning of the property known as Parcels 158 and 159 on tax map 45H located at No. No. Willow Road and 2 Willow Road, Annapolis, from R2 residential to SB small business.
Mr. Volkey, this is your amendment, companion amendment.
Thank you. So, I'll just reiterate the comments from the last amendment. This is the corresponding zoning change that makes the land zoned small business. Move the amendment.
Sarah, second?
Fiedler, second.
The administration, still neutral?
Correct.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Ms. Rodvian?
I just, again, want to express my opposition to this amendment. I think the community, once again, has made it crystal clear that this is not what they're looking for in the Ridgely Avenue corridor, and I hope you reject this amendment as well. Instead, I hope you reject this amendment.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 2 to Bill 9-24.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment Number 2 to Bill 9-24 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 6 to Bill 8-24.
Amendment Number 6. This amendment requires a sector plan for Ridgely Avenue to include input from residents and other stakeholders.
Ms. Rodvian, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you. So, as you heard in the testimony this evening, there are a good number of folks that are interested in a sector plan. I didn't hear from those folks initially, probably because it was in the plan. And so, when I brought forward the amendment to remove the sector plan, there were immediately folks that came back to me and said, "Wait, wait, 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 wait. We think this is actually going to be a valuable discussion for our community." And so, I want to, I'm bringing this amendment at this time. I guess I'll go ahead and move the amendment, and I'll talk more later. Move to adopt Amendment Number 6.
Fiedler, second.
Would the administration like to comment on Amendment Number 6?
Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Obviously, the Office of Planning and Zoning had recommended a sector plan for this area. A sector plan is like a mini master plan. It just covers a much smaller area. They are commonplace in other counties, although I'm not sure we've had a sector plan in our county in quite some time, if at all. So, we had originally recommended that, and then Ms. Rodvian had done the amendment to take it out, which we supported. But we felt the sector plan was the right way to go. And, again, the community is very split over this. So, I think we're going to end up being neutral again on this. I will say that with the way the amendment is worded, I think there's just one technical issue, and that is, if line 25 is being eliminated, we need to change the comma at the end of line 24 to a period, to avoid a technical amendment.
Can we do that on the fly? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Do I have two versions of this amendment already?
You do. You may even have three.
Okay.
And I'd like to...
I'm going to look at whatever Ms. Schultz produces. Whatever... I'm good. I just didn't... That's a technical change that we can make right now. In my role, I can make that change. No problem. Okay. To reference the right line. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. So first, I want to give a thanks to members of the Guy family, who approached me before the meeting when they saw the amendment six, as I was intending to introduce it, and alerted me to an unattended consequence of the way the amendment was written. So since we struck the village sector plan in an amendment, I can't remember if that was just the last meeting or the meeting before, but since that had been struck, and all references to the village sector plan had been struck, the way that the amendment was written would have not, would have left, would have basically restored everything that was in the sector plan, and that wasn't my intention. I'm hoping that this is a middle ground. This isn't a village center sector study anymore. This is a sector study. And I hope the change in that terminology is a little bit self-explanatory. We've heard tons and tons of what the community does not want. But at the same time, that leaves sort of a black hole in terms of what is wanted. And so this simply will facilitate a process to bring people together and talk about the things that are wanted. And for that reason, I ask for my colleagues' support.
Any other questions or comments about amendment number six to bill eight twenty-four? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number six to bill eight twenty-four.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number six to bill eight twenty-four has been adopted.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just to address the audience. Now, you all have to be nice to each other when you talk and meet in the sector, in the sector plan. You have to come together.
Both bill eight twenty-four as amended and nine twenty-four as amended will be heard on May 6, 2024. Do we need a break? I'd like to ask my colleagues for a brief recess. Five minutes. Council is in recess for five minutes. Thank you. But it's really five minutes. Who gets to go to the bathroom first? I'm going to ask for everyone to get seated, and we're going to resume this business meeting Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number sixteen dash twenty-four.
Bill sixteen twenty-four, in ordinance concerning zoning, uses, food service facilities, outdoor seating related to food and beverage service.
Mr. Hunt, this is the county executive bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Lori Klosmeyer from the Office of Law, and Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning. So bill sixteen twenty-four is in a follow-up to a bill that was passed by the council late last fall, extending the temporary emergency ordinance allowing for outdoor dining that was established under emergency orders back in, I believe, the spring of 2021 for the COVID pandemic. So we've discussed this bill at prior council meeting and work session. We're happy to take any questions, or head to the public hearing.
Do we have any discussion at this time on bill sixteen dash twenty-four? We will now open the public hearing on bill sixteen dash twenty-four. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, we received seven pieces of testimony, which have been posted to the website, added to the record, and shared with the council.
Thank you. I do have one individual signed up in advance. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Ms. Nancy Guy. If anyone else in the audience is here and wishes to testify on bill sixteen twenty-four, you may come up at this time as well. Thank you, Ms. Guy. State your name and address for the record. You have the floor.
My name is Nancy Guy, 605 North Buscet Row. Giving the business owners more time to wine and dine their clients at the expense of residents after normal waking hours of its citizens is disturbing the peace and tranquility of its residents and citizens of the area, and only feeding the pockets of developers and business people. This is not what the community wants or needs. What the community wants is for their children to be able to get a good night's sleep and to be able to go to school and prosper. The elderly want to be able to go to sleep and to have a restful night's sleep and keep their health and well-being up to what it should be. All the citizens of the area are entitled to a peaceful community. While COVID, yes, is over, we had outdoor seating, but now that it is over, we need to give back to the reality, we need to get back to the reality, and let our neighbors and neighborhood get back to where it was with a normal life. Stop invading the privacy of the neighborhood, and stop feeding into business owners at the expense of their citizens. Let's give back to the residents their rightful peace and tranquility they so deserve. I oppose this bill, and I ask the county council to please do the same. Thank you for your time.
State your name and address for the record. You have two minutes, sir.
Our community, 2383 Terriff and Crossing. Would it be possible to alter it so that it restricts how long outdoor seating could be allowed, if at a certain distance away from homes, apartments, and things like that? So instead of just saying you can only have these things, you say you can keep them open only until a reasonable time, so that people can go to sleep and put their children to sleep? Is it possible to do that?
Seeing no further movement in the audience, the public hearing on bill number sixteen dash twenty-four is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number sixteen dash twenty-four.
Bill number sixteen twenty-four, in ordinance concerning zoning, uses, food service facilities, outdoor seating related to food and beverage service.
I believe we have an amendment on sixteen dash twenty-four. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number two.
Amendment number two. This amendment removes the prohibition on outdoor seating at food service facilities that are less than 100 feet from a residential property.
Ms. Ledbetter, this is your amendment. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you recall, at our last meeting, I voted against the amendment that added the 100 feet prohibition. I was nervous for the facts that I actually was able to learn over the past two weeks, that there are businesses within my district, we have large lot sizes, and in many cases, the dwelling is actually not right next to the business. And so with this prohibition in this bill, it actually would prevent businesses who have been operating successfully without complaints from their neighbors, in great, actually in good partnership in relationship with their neighbors, and it would negatively impact them. So move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the administration like to weigh in on amendment number two?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. Obviously, this language takes it back to the bill as we originally introduced it. I would just caution the council. So I believe the current emergency legislation expires June 1st. So counting backwards 45 days, there's not enough time to bring this bill back as amended, and have it take effect prior to the expiration of the current outdoor dining allowance. I would also add, just that, you know, to speaking to Ms. Ledbetter's concerns, which I fully recognize and understand, those property owners do have the option to seek a variance through the administrative hearing process. And in instances where the dwelling is more than 100 feet away from the property line or the adjacent business, that might be a good reason for a variance to be granted.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As far as the expiration date, I am prepared to come back on May 1st to introduce emergency legislation that would extend the expiration of that emergency bill, to give us time to continue to work on this piece of legislation. With that time, we also may be able to discuss the idea that testimony was just brought up, that might be worth us continuing to discuss. But I am prepared. I would introduce that emergency legislation at our legislative session on May 1st. We would be able to vote on that emergency legislation on May 6. That would allow it to be signed into law, allowing the temporary ordinance to stay in effect. And I'd be willing to work with my council members to determine what date makes sense to put on that, to give us the time we need to get this bill where we think it should
Any other comments or questions on amendment number two? Seeing none, Madam Sec...
I'm so sorry. I'm always so slow, and you look to the left first all the time.
Okay.
It's okay. Chairman Smith did the same thing. It's always...
You may have the floor.
Thank you. My apologies.
You have two minutes.
I have my two minutes. Obviously, I was the supporter of the amendment that created this 100-foot boundary. And so for that reason, I obviously am going to oppose this amendment. We may have to find some middle ground to make sure that businesses that are being disruptive... I actually like the suggestion of a time possible cutoff. So I oppose the amendment, and I hope my colleagues will as well.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. During the previous meeting, I did support Councilwoman Rodvian's amendment. When you're thinking of amendments on the fly, that one I just so happened to see on the fly, you, at least I, run through a rolodex of impacts to my district. Nothing really stood out. But I don't just dine in my district. I dine all over Anarundale County. So understanding that it did have impacts in other areas, I think we need some more work. So I will be supporting this amendment tonight.
I'm going to take my time. Does the administration want to add anything? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number two.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment number two to bill sixteen twenty-four has been adopted.
Bill number sixteen dash twenty-four as amended will be heard on May 6, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number seventeen dash twenty-four.
Bill number seventeen twenty-four, in ordinance concerning zoning, adult independent dwelling
Mr. Hunt, this is the county executive bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So bill seventeen twenty-four was discussed at the last council meeting and at the March work session, I believe. So its intent is to modify the definition of adult independent dwelling unit, clarifying the allowed use of AIDUs in certain residential districts, and adding multifamily dwelling and townhouse dwellings as a conditional use in certain residential districts. Happy to take any questions.
Is there any discussion on bill seventeen dash twenty-four before we open the public Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on bill seventeen dash twenty-four. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any testimony.
We do not have anybody signed up in advance. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak on bill seventeen dash twenty-four, you may come to the table at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on bill number seventeen dash twenty-four is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number seventeen dash twenty-four.
Bill seventeen twenty-four, in ordinance concerning zoning, adult independent dwelling
We do have, I believe, two amendments. I don't know what... Madam Secretary, please read amendment number two.
Amendment number two. This amendment removes minimum site area requirements for R10, R15, and R22.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This is actually my amendment to bill seventeen dash twenty-four, and it does exactly what you stated. It removes minimum site area requirements for R10, R15, and R22. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Rodvian, second.
Would the administration like to comment on amendment number two?
Just to thank the chair for sharing this with us ahead of time. We're comfortable with this amendment.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on amendment number two? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number two.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Was that a "aye"?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment number two to bill seventeen twenty-four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number three.
Amendment number three. This technical amendment corrects a typographical error in a section number.
This is a county executive amendment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Description says what the amendment does. We have a strong stance against typos. Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt amendment number three?
Is there a second?
Rodvian, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number three.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number three to bill seventeen twenty-four has been adopted.
Thank you. Bill number seventeen dash twenty-four as amended will be heard on May 6, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill twenty dash twenty-four.
Bill twenty twenty-four, in ordinance concerning zoning, mixed-use districts, requirements for conditional uses, BWI, Fort Meade Growth Area, multifamily residential uses.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This is actually my bill. We've discussed this both at the work session and at the last two meetings. If there's no questions, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on bill twenty dash We'll now open the public hearing on bill number twenty dash twenty-four. Did we receive... Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive any written testimony on the online tool.
I don't have anybody signed up to speak on bill number twenty dash twenty-four. If there's anyone here in the audience that wishes to speak on bill twenty dash twenty-four, you may come to the table at this time, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. thoughts using our online testimony tool. We'll start here.
Jonathan Atman, 7779 New York Lane, Glen Burnie. Madam Chair, I just wanted to thank you for your leadership in bringing this great, this bill forward. As you all know, there's a major housing crisis in Anarundel County, especially in this important employment hub of Anarundel County between BWI, Fort Meade, NSA. And this bill really is a huge step forward in solving a crisis that we're facing here in the county. I also wanted to thank Pete Smith, Nathan Volkey. Thank you. You guys both came out and looked at what we've done at Sandy Farms, and this bill allows us to build quality housing for the residents of Anarundel County. And I hope everyone has the opportunity to come out and see what we're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kenley Bray with the law firm YVS Law LLC in Annapolis, 185 Admiral Cochran Drive, here with Mr. Atman. And also wanted to thank the hard work of the council member, the council chair, and other members of the council who have worked on this bill and given their input. It's critical to have, I think, as we've heard in the discussion about these region plans, flexibility in the zoning code is not really common. This bill actually introduces some flexibility to respond to market changes, to address the housing crisis, to provide high-quality housing near the state's largest employer and near BWI Airport. So, we urge your support of the bill, and thank you for your time.
Evening, ma'am. Mark Kmet again, 2383 Terrapin. I appreciate the intent of trying to be flexible, as was just noted. But as written, this is very confusing. Commercial zoning means commercial zoning. Mixed use, you have some flexibility. Residential, you have a lot of flexibility from R1 up to R44. To mix in residential into commercial is extremely confusing, and then no one's going to understand, well, I'm going to put an apartment complex there. Oh, wait, it's commercial. I shouldn't even try there. Or, they're going to come because they know the right people that can ask them the right questions. It's just, while it may be flexible, it's also so vaguely written, it's very hard to follow the law properly. Anything can go in there, then there's really no control. Out.
Mr. Minahan?
Thank you. Good evening. Matt Minahan, on behalf of the Growth Action Network. We understand the imperative for affordable housing in the county is powerful and persuasive. Redevelopment, we believe, is the most effective and efficient way to do that. Brownfield development rather than Greenfield development preserves our open space, preserves our tree cover, and so we have strong support for the redevelopment here. We also find the bill confusing, and we'd just like for there to be a way for citizens without graduate degrees in city planning to be able to understand what the specifics of the bill are. But I'll say again what I said at the beginning of this evening, and that is that this bill has nothing around transit infrastructure to support the increased density of housing. And I would just encourage you, when you're considering housing bills like this, to work harder for an element of transit, to remove the principal objection that people have the density, which is the traffic and congestion. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Hello again. Mary Guy, 605 North Best Gate Road. I'd like to ask the county council to clarify, how many housing units are being built already in the county? What's the current vacancy rate for existing structures? What's the cost per month for rent for existing units? And how many units are really needed in total? You've got a huge amount of building that's occurring on Reva Road. You've got a huge amount of building that's occurred all along Route 32. We heard tonight about other areas that are also being built. Section 181025 that talks about the dwelling units for multifamily says that the requirement is not less than 10% would be used for people of low income. That's a really low threshold. And again, I would encourage the county to increase that. I think it actually decreased it at the last meeting from 15% to 10%, and I would encourage you to rethink that. If the county council is really passionate and committed to providing more options for low-income housing, then it's really obligated to increase the percentage of dwelling units that are designated for low-income and families and individuals of low income and disability and so forth. The taxpayers in the county and their funds need to be used to benefit all, not just the people who are doing the building and will continue to perpetuate income coming in through rental units and so forth, leases and otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on Bill 2024? You may come forward at this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 20-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 20-24. Bill Number 2024: An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Mixed-Use Districts: Requirements for Conditional Uses BWI Fort Meade Growth Area Multifamily Residential Uses. Thank you. I'll try to address some of the questions that came forward during public testimony. Let me be very clear. Mixed-use zones currently exist. We have five of them in the code. While they may be confusing to laypeople, they're not confusing necessarily to people who are accessing them for development. They are, however, outdated. And we are in a serious need to revamp how each percentage of mixed-use zoning is worked through. This bill would allow, in a very targeted area, would allow the commercial component to become residential. The 10% requirement for units to be moderately priced units is certainly a high target for non-government subsidized housing. This is all subsidized by the market itself. This is not, when we say moderately priced income, that is for folks earning 80% of our average median income. We do have a housing crisis at all levels of income. The supply, we have a low supply currently of housing in the county. And this bill is targeted in our employment areas to accomplish a few things. I'm happy to answer any questions from my colleagues. Happy to have the administration weigh in if they have anything to say. But we worked collaboratively for many months on this bill. Mr. Smith?
Madam Chair, just for transparency purposes, I did forward this bill a few weeks ago to the Region 1 team, because a large portion of it is in Region 1. I wanted to make sure that that current team is reviewing impacts and is aware of potential impacts, because if they change the zoning of something, it could fall into this equation. I am aware of the handful of properties that it would impact. None in Jessup, just to see you all clear of that. And am supportive of trying to find a middle ground to address some of these housings or just, it will allow some of the, one of the current projects certainly, to transition some of that commercial lower-level-floor stuff to more housing. So, in an area that is designed for it, and it makes sense for that. And so, that being said, I was going to support the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I want to be clear. The bill does not exempt, it does not exempt adequate public facilities in any way. It also mirrors what we have seen in the parole town center and the Odenton Town Center as in regard to density targets. If there are no further questions or comments, I look to the right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 20-24. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 20-24 has passed. Madam Secretary, please read Bill Number 21-24. Bill 2124: An Ordinance Concerning General Provisions Equity and Human Rights, Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Human Relations Commission. This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Asha Smith, the Director of our Office of Equity and Human Rights, and, oh, I wasn't sure, Lori Klosbier from the Office of Law. Excuse me. So, we did discuss this legislation at the work session last week. Anarundel County is currently the only large county in the state of Maryland that does not have a local civil rights law. This bill would remedy that, would add public accommodation and employment to the list of prohibited discrimination that currently is just encompassed by housing discrimination, and would give the Human Relations Commission the authority to investigate complaints. And I will turn it over to Asha, who can give a much better explanation than I possibly could.
Sure. Oh, there I go. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. You've made it this far. I've made it this far. I'm really glad to be up here after a long evening. But I would like to say, this bill, I think, has been a long time coming. The administration has worked really hard on this over a course of several months. As Ethan mentioned, the purpose of the bill is to expand the current housing discrimination law that we have in the county, so that anti-discrimination statute now will include provisions pertaining to private employment and public accommodations, prohibiting discrimination in those settings as well. As is done with housing currently, the Human Relations Commission would be authorized to conduct hearings. The Office of Equity and Human Rights would be authorized under my supervision or the supervision of the Human Relations Officer to conduct investigations of cases. That's pretty much the gist of it.
I will just add that this legislation is modeled on the other counties as well as the state Human Relations Act, which is in Title 20 of the state government article.
Correct. So, in terms of the protected classes, it's fairly consistent with the state law.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. So, if an individual in the county currently feels that they've been discriminated against in either public accommodations or in private employment, where do they seek recourse today?
Today, they can go either to MCCR, which is a state agency, or to the EEOC.
Okay. So, they have those two avenues already in existence for them. And both of those avenues have investigatory authority, have ability to impose fines, have ability to put in place other remedial measures that are necessary to ensure, one, that the situation has been addressed, and, two, that it doesn't repeat. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. So, what is the purpose of now adding this as an expanded role to the county's purview, if you will? Because I have a long enough tenure on this council. I can remember when the Human Relations Commission was a creature of executive order. Then it became a creature of statute. Then it became a creature of charter. And all of those sort of different steps have happened in the last five years, and each of them have been focused on housing. And now, we're expanding out beyond housing. So, I have some follow-up questions, but my first one would be, why is it necessary? Why, if we have these already at the state and at the federal level, what does this do that those don't?
Sure. So, the reason why local jurisdictions are generally empowered to do this is because of the backlog typically that you'll find at the state and federal level at those agencies. So, the idea is that the local jurisdiction can kind of resolve these cases more quickly. In addition to which, local jurisdictions tend to know more about their area and the particular types of issues that arise within the jurisdiction.
May I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
Thank you. So, can you tell me, with the Human Relations Commission at present, with the purview that you have it at the moment, which is exclusively in housing and discrimination in housing, what is the workload that the Human Relations Commission is experiencing?
Right now, it's very little in terms of housing. We have not had many cases go to hearing. And I can tell you that, in general, I think that, you know, our state and federal counterparts would agree, most cases don't go to hearing. They tend to be resolved before they get to the hearing stage.
Okay. So, I guess that's kind of what I'm looking at, is if I look at the workload that the commission is experiencing right now, and I see the staff that we've allocated in budgets, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars for staffing up on those, on the commission to be able to do the hearings, and we look at the workload, I guess I'm not clear, are we saying that there is a massive backlog at the state in terms of discrimination cases and that they can't handle the load they have? Are we saying that that's the same problem at the federal government? Do we need to be talking to our state and federal partners about their inability to manage the caseload? Like, what do we have going on?
So, that's an interesting way to put that. So, I would say that this, first of all, the federal government enters into file-sharing agreements with local jurisdictions for exactly that reason. They pay, so the EEOC pays local jurisdictions to adjudicate and to actually manage complaints on their behalf. Those are called Fair Employment Practices Agencies. They've been around a long time. There's a reason why most large jurisdictions around the country have these types of agencies. I would also add that the second part of your question was...
Do we need to go talk to them and tell them they're not managing their backlog?
Oh, that's right. You wanted me to tell them that they're not managing their cases effectively. I wouldn't, I don't know that I would do that.
I didn't think you'd want to say that.
I don't know that I would do that. We really tend to partner a lot. We have great relationships with MCCR and with the EEOC. But there is a reason why they incentivize, the federal government does incentivize local jurisdictions to take cases. And there's a reason why the state agency partners with municipalities around the state to provide guidance and help in adjudicating cases. And it's because of the backlog that they get in cases, and again, the expertise that local jurisdictions have in the types of discrimination issues that arise within their geographical borders. In addition, there's an outreach component that arises from knowing what types of complaints arise in your jurisdiction and being able to be responsive to trends in discrimination.
May I ask on the follow-up?
Seeing no one else has any questions, because we all attended the work session. You can.
You will. Yeah. I would ask these questions at the work session if I was there. So, with understanding all of that, do we have an inability to take on these cases, or are there no other partners at the local level? Is that why this is needed?
So, in general, I can't speak to local partners taking on discrimination cases. It's not a model that I'm familiar with.
Well, I guess you were saying that the federal government incentivizes municipalities and localities to try to assist with the workload, is what it sounded like to me.
Correct. Yes.
So, do we have local partners that are presently working in conjunction with state and federal agencies who are investigating discrimination currently?
Yes. And so, they have jurisdiction over the complaints that arise in their jurisdiction, right? So, for example, if I understand you correctly, you're asking, does Howard County, for example, do this work? Or does Montgomery County have an office? And the answer to that question would be yes.
Does Anarundel have anybody?
No, because...
So, this is needed to be able to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Good. So, you just clicked for...
I did. The light bulb just went off. I understand your question.
It takes time, but I'm there. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the other jurisdictions who have passed this legislation, do we have any idea of the workload that they have absorbed from the state or federal government?
So, I think there are a couple of things that I would point out. One is that to enter into that arrangement with the federal government, for example, to become a Fair Employment Practices Agency, or in the case of housing, you would become what they call a FIP or a FAP, right? And so, there's sort of a threshold that you have to reach. You have to be doing what you're doing for a certain amount of time. There's sort of requirements that you have to meet. And then, cases will come to you as you increase in your capacity. So, there's funding that you can get that will help you to build that capacity so that you can take on more cases, if that makes sense. I can't, I can't tell you what a caseload in a neighboring jurisdiction looks like, because I would have to do a quick analysis of their population, the... the number of cases, the types of cases, et cetera, et cetera. But I can tell you that, you know, these jurisdictions are busy. That's the reporting that I get from my peers. I am a part of the Maryland Association of Human Rights Agencies. We collaborate often. And so, I know that, you know, there's a lot of work to be done.
Okay. Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up?
Of course.
Is there an oversight component to the local format of this, for lack of a better term?
Oversight from, like, another government entity, or?
Just to keep tabs on, you know, if you do go to hearings, just, I guess, oversight, follow the cases, see what's happening. Or would that be incumbent upon the council and the executive's office?
I would say that that's incumbent on the council and the executive's office. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
I will just add, I do believe there is a reporting requirement in the bill.
There is.
That they do...
I think it's annual.
Annual.
Thank you.
To the council and the executive.
Ms. Smith, to follow up on Ms. Fiedler's question, you are that officer of the executive, correct, over the Human Relations Commissioner, and you...
Correct.
So, it's not just going to be volunteer commissioners engaged in this work?
Oh, no, 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 no.
I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yes. That would be my office. In addition to which, the Office of Law would be providing training for the commissioners in their role, and would also be providing support during hearings.
Ms. Radveen?
Thank you. And I just wanted to follow up, because I think we talked about this at the work session, that any decisions could also be reviewed by the Board of Appeals and then taken to Circuit Court.
That's correct.
So, there's lots of opportunities for review, and, you know, in the future, there's some rogue commission.
Yes.
I believe we need to have a public hearing on this bill. We will open the public hearing on Bill 21-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any public, any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, we received one piece of written testimony, which has been posted to the website, added to the record, and shared with the council.
I do have one individual signed up in advance. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. If there's others in the audience that would like to testify on Bill Number 20-24, this is also an opportunity to come fill the five other seats. I have Elsa Matheson, Mathiason, I think I said that wrong. State your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Elsa Matheson, 1462 Bay Green Drive, Arnold, Maryland. And I am here today on behalf of the Anarundel Youth Advisory Council. During its March meeting, the council voted unanimously to support Bill 21-24, the first ever local civil rights ordinance bill within Anarundel County. The Anarundel County Youth Advisory Council serves as a voice for Anarundel County's youth. We are a diverse group of members that weigh in on issues across the county. The diversity in our council allows us to have a unique perspective on how bills will affect the youth. I mention the youth a lot, because we are the future backbone of the county, the people who will be doctors, first responders, civil servants, possibly the people who will teach your future grandchildren. The bills passed now affect the youth more than a lot of people realize. Although some of us might not be working currently, everyone, including future generations, deserve to have their civil rights protected. Without these protections, people who are amazing at their job could be discriminated against in states, federal, and at the state and federal level, they're too backlogged with so much work to be able to deal with it, leaving less doctors, less teachers, and less first responders. According to RAND, an organization that researches civil rights issues, one-third of teachers of color face racial discrimination, often from the workplace, the same place in which diversity and inclusion is and should be promoted. Additionally, RAND found that all students benefit socially and academically when teachers come from diverse backgrounds. Personally, I aspire to be an engineer, because I want to contribute to society in a meaningful way. However, engineering is notorious with being a male-dominated field with endless reports of gender discrimination. According to a University of Mississippi 2022...
Thank you, Ms. Math... Two minutes is up. Sorry. Thank you so much. And it's probably time to get home for school tomorrow. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on Bill 20-21-24 this evening? Thank you, sir. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Ben Barlow, Smithy Law Group, we're at 706 Giddings Avenue, just down the road from you. One thing that I wanted to add is that, in a job where I'm representing a lot of employees and employers before states, the MCCR and EEOC, is that it's an extremely frustrating process for employees and employers together, that the backlog's not something that I wouldn't, if I knew who to call on the phone to advise them how to distribute their backlog better, I would be on the phone. Because most people we work with who have had terrible things happen to them at work, they end up filing a complaint, and six months later, they're forced with a decision of, do we want to try to pull this out and go to Circuit Court, or can we wait another six months and see if it finally gets on the radar somewhere? In my practice, counties, PG County, Montgomery County, counties that have a human rights commission that deals with complaints like this, I've found it to be a much more friendly process for clients. And clients tend to, no guarantees, but clients tend to have a hearing earlier, and tend to, that's really the one thing that we're all about. I mean, people have already had such an ordeal happen at work. We're just trying not to give them an endless process, where the process is actually as damaging as whatever went on with their employer. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bill 21-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 21-24.
Bill Number 21-24, In Ordnance Concerning General Provisions, Equity and Human Rights, Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Human Relations Commission.
Is there any questions or comments remaining in this discussion from my colleagues?
Wait, no.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Hammer.
You turned your head that way.
I did. I'm turning to the right now.
So, I just, I want to thank the last speaker, because I think that's one of the best things about this bill, is that we will now have the opportunity, on a county level, to deal with these type of complaints in a more timely fashion. Justice delayed is justice denied. And if people are having, have really been discriminated against in the workplace, and they are waiting months, if not years, to even have their case heard, that is justice denied. And so, if we can do that on a more timely basis on the county level, we should be all for that.
Thank you. Did you want to offer any final comments from the administration?
Just briefly, Madam Chair, to follow up on that and what the last speaker said, is that this bill does provide a more accessible and faster remedy for people who have suffered discrimination. That's really the goal here.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 21-24.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hammer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven, the affirmative, none, and the negative. Bill Number 21-24 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 22-24.
Bill Number 22-24, In Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate School Facilities, School Utilization Chart.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Kyle Ruff from the Board of Education, Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Lori Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. So, the purpose of this legislation is to approve the school utilization chart, which has been updated by the Planning and Zoning Officer based on 2025 enrollment projections. We did discuss it at the work session. We're happy to take any questions. There is one administration amendment that we can discuss at the appropriate time.
Is there any discussion on Bill 22-24 from my colleagues? We're going to open the public hearing then, real quick. On Bill Number 22, I'm getting my numbers confused, 22-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
We did not receive any testimony, Madam Chair.
We did not have anyone signed up ahead of time. Is that if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on Bill 22-24 at this time, please come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no movement in the audience, we will close the public hearing on Bill 22-24. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 22-24.
Bill 22-24, In Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Adequate School Facilities, School Utilization Chart.
We've spoken extensively at the work session about this bill. We do have an amendment. Madam Secretary, you want to read the amendment number one?
Amendment number one. This amendment substitutes the exhibit to include an explanatory footnote.
This is your amendment. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as was discussed at the work session, this chart is an amendment that includes a footnote to show that the 2026 projected enrollment data sets in the chart were approved by the Board of Ed. June 26th of 2023, and does not include the November 15th, 2023 redistricting plan that was approved by the Board of Education. I think that council felt that was important to include in here. So, we have offered that as an amendment.
Is there a motion to adopt amendment number one?
Radveen's so moved.
Is there a second?
Ledbetter's second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Ms. Radveen?
I just want to say thank you for doing this, because I think this is a great idea, just to help people get more context when they look at these charts.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As well, I just wanted to comment, too. I think it's fabulous that you put the footnote on every single page, recognizing that a parent in the Annapolis cluster might not look, as you're scrolling through, Annapolis is the beginning, that might be the best example, but a parent in the southern cluster might not catch a footnote that might have only been on page one. So, I appreciate the thoughtfulness in that.
Ms. Hammer?
Yes. Again, we talked about this extensively at the work session, but really appreciate this. It's, this county has invested hundreds of millions of dollars in school construction, and it's fabulous. It's something we should be proud of. And we need to make sure that the data we put out reflects to the public, makes it easily accessible for the public to see that our schools are not as overcrowded, because we are doing that. And so, this gives the most updated information. And I, for one, am really looking forward to the two new schools opening this fall, and that next year's chart will reflect all of that data change.
Thank you, Ms. Hammer. I also support this amendment. I also support a revised chart in the near future, and actually speaking a little bit more about how we can still make this chart better. I know you want another work group with me leading it, don't you?
Yeah.
With that, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hammer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radveen?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye. Seven, the affirmative, none, and the negative. Amendment Number One to Bill 22-24 has been adopted.
Bill Number 22-24 will come back as amended to be heard on May 6, 2024. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 23-24.
Bill 23-24, In Ordnance Concerning Pensions, Interplan Transfers, Deputy Police Chief.
Mr. Volkey, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody who has stuck around for this. Obviously, it's been a couple hours. So, with that, I was contacted by one of my constituents, who is in the police service and is a longtime service member in the police service for Anarundel County, who had been in the police department for years, and then had retired, and then came back in the police department at the behest of certain members of the police department. But when that happened, was unable to come back in and resume participation in the police pension, which is very different, as those who are in the know on the police versus the county pension, they recognize that there are different benefits available. So, what this does is this, and I know that there will be testimony directly from some of the people impacted by this, but what this does is creates an ability for a person who was hired in a specific calendar year, 2015, in the position they're appointed as deputy chief of police, to be able to move into the police service retirement plan as opposed to the employee's retirement plan. And the way that that would be done is without having to put in extra funds for that. Now, there are some reasons for that. I want to be clear. When you come back into the county service, as many people know, and actually, Mr. Smith put in a bill tonight, that's going to be heard in about a month, that will deal with some rehiring provisions for the county, and trying to make it more attractive to retain retirees in the county. But when you come back into the county service, you forego your ability to collect your pension. So, over time, as you are working for the county, you are losing out on money that you would otherwise be getting. And so, that's a big factor of this. And for the people impacted by this, that is to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars. This is not tens of thousands. This is not even 100,000. It's more than that. And so, ultimately, when we look at the money that the pension plan has been able to save from not having to make those payments, and then we compare that to the amounts that would be contributed by someone into that plan, the contributions pale in comparison to the savings to the pension itself. Ultimately, I recognize that there is a greater pension benefit that will be paid out over time to anyone who is able to take advantage of this. But again, we talk all the time about how we need qualified police officers. We talk all the time about how we need police officers who reflect the community, who look like the community, who are able to connect and interact with the community. And sometimes, that requires us going out and taking a particular person and saying, that's who we're going to bring into this position. And so, with that, that's part of what happened here. That's part of the impetus for this bill, is to make sure that we are treating people fairly, who have come into this system, and who have done a service for the county, and who have done something that the county could not otherwise do. So, with that, I would ask for my colleague's support on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey. Does the administration have a response?
Just briefly, Madam Chair, I think generally, we have concerns about legislation specifically that is directed towards one individual. But with me at the table are Ann Bedawski and Kelly Lovett from the Office of Personnel, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. We're happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Hammer?
So, I am very supportive of correcting things that are within our pension system that may be adversely affecting people to have that. However, the way that this bill is worded, some questions were presented to me this afternoon, and I would like to get some clarification from the Office of Law regarding that this bill might be in violation of special laws in the provision in the Maryland Constitution. Could you speak to that?
Yes. Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. We did look at this in the Office of Law, and do have some concerns that that would violate the Maryland Constitution, because there is a specific provision that prohibits the state and also the counties from enacting a law, a special law that would only apply to one class or one particular person. And there are factors that courts would look at when they're determining, making that determination. We analyze all those, and really have a concern that in this situation where it only applies, it doesn't state the name, but it does specifically state a very limited timeframe, and then it sunsets, so it really, in its application, would only apply to one person ever. So, we would find that it would be unconstitutional.
So, may I ask another question?
Yes, go ahead.
So, if this were a bill that was written in such a way that it could impact a greater class, a larger class of people, that would not be in violation of special laws, but it's because of how narrowly it's written? Is that what we're saying?
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. Yes, that's correct. If it was something that was in effect from, it did not sunset, then it could possibly affect somebody in the future. That may not have that same concern. But because it's really spelled out to only apply to one specific person... apply to one specific person, whereas something that it's a general application, which may in effect only apply to one person at that particular time, but could apply to somebody in the future, you know, that's where the differentiation would lie.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Radveen?
Thank you. So as I've been learning about this legislation and the situation from which it arose, I understand that there was actually similar legislation for another individual in the same department some years back. Has that issue come up for that individual? Has there been any sort of challenge to that particular, you know, I really don't feel comfortable, we're sort of talking employment, so I'm trying to not use names, but I hope you, I think you probably know the case that I'm talking about. Has that come under any scrutiny or challenge in, with this, with respect to, you know, I can't, a law that sort of targets one individual?
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. Not that I'm aware of. You know, again, only a court can strike down a law as unconstitutional, so that means that somebody has to challenge it. So I'm not aware of any challenge specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Smith?
Actually, it was by legislation for Chief Altamore. I'll put it out there, probably around like 2015, 2016?
2015.
It was 2015. It was my bill, and I think part of it was, we were trying to make sure that that person was not going to be removed from office. We were concerned about that because of some stances or issues that the police departments were taking. So in order to protect the incoming, or the police chief that we, they had selected from the county executive at the time, we put that bill in, and it has not been challenged. It impacted one individual. And I think it was the right thing to do then, and probably think this is the right thing to do now.
Ms. Leadbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to make sure I understand my history properly, because what you're discussing predates my time on the council. That bill you're discussing were, the provisions of it, my understanding is the provisions of it were never, while they were passed, they were never utilized. Would that, I might not be using the right words, but it was never needed, even though it was passed.
Come on.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and I am asking the question out of sincere desire to make sure I understand.
So Lori Blair Klassmeyer, Deputy County Attorney, and I'm only up here because I don't think Ms. Kelly is familiar with this particular, that particular provision of law, it did not really only affect one person. It remains in the law. It has to do with, you know, what has to happen for someone to be dismissed from a particular exempt position. So it really, while that, the former chief was the impetus for the bill, it was not so narrowly focused or limited to just apply to one person. So that's a totally different situation.
Thank you for making sure my history.
Yeah, no problem.
Is adequately understood.
Yep.
Don't leave.
My turn?
Mr. Volkey, you have the floor.
Thank you. So as I recall, you were trying to be quick, I saw it. But as I recall, the deputy, or the chief of police was selected, and he had not fully vested in the pension. He was not at 20 years. And so the concern was that by putting him in an appointed position, that if he were to be dismissed from that appointed position prior to reaching 20 years, then he would lose the entire benefit. He was unwilling to do that, and so we basically allowed him to vest early, because he had gotten into that position. Is that correct?
I don't think he vested early. I thought it was that in order for him to be dismissed, there had to be, or anyone in that exempt position, it may have even covered more exempt positions. I don't remember off the top of my head.
I thought it only covered him.
But if it was only the police chief, but it required a procedure to occur for him to be, he didn't vest early, but it required a procedure for him to be dismissed. And I think it had to do with the nature of the reason for the dismissal, or something like that. But that, it had a broader effect than just for him. It's still in the books, it's still in the code, and it applies much more broadly.
All right, I won't grill you on this next one. So.
You can go back to my seat.
Yes, that's fine. So what I don't understand is this. I had this bill drafted. I had Office of Law draft this bill, right? I requested that Office of Law draft this. Our legislative council did not draft this. This issue was never raised to me by Office of Law. This issue was never brought up by anyone in law or personnel prior to this moment, right here, right now. I literally learned about it within an hour before this meeting started. How does that happen? How is it y'all draft the bill for me, but no one says, hey, by the way, we think this might be unconstitutional, it's a problem, and then all of a sudden we get sandbagged with it at the meeting? And I'm using the word sandbagged, because that's how I feel, but, you know.
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. I'm hoping that's a rhetorical question, but I'll answer the best that I can. Obviously, as you all know, I don't do a lot of personnel law. But Ms. Blair drafted this for you, and when we have an attorney who drafts something for the council member, then usually we'll have an admin rep who's somebody different. I know that Mr. Swain looked at this, the special law provision, and, you know, engaged in the analysis and made that determination, because this bill is just so specific, unlike some of the others that we were talking about, that it has a more general application, even if it is aimed at somebody else.
May I follow up?
You may.
Thank you. How do we make this bill constitutional?
Well, I think having something that is not so limited in scope, that would possibly apply to other people in the same class in the future, so not limited in the scope of the timeframe with which they were appointed, and not sunsetting, because then that way it would apply to somebody else possibly in the future if they ever fell within this category.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't want to be searching through my emails. I wanted to listen to this conversation. I remember, I believe, that the Pension Oversight Committee referenced that historical, not historical bill, but a bill from history. Was there an opinion on that particular bill, the one that we're referencing with regard to the previous?
By the pension.
Yeah, by pension oversight.
Mike Shire, on behalf of the Pension Oversight Commission, the Pension Oversight Commission opposed that legislation at the time. I'm sorry, did you say you remember?
No, no, I do remember.
Thank you. Did the representative of the Pension Oversight Commission, did you want to speak, since you've sat here all night?
Sure.
Okay.
As you all have the Pension Oversight Commission's letter, we, Mike Shire for the record, we are, the commission was opposed to this legislation for multiple reasons. The fact that it applies to a single class, it provides a windfall that is not contributed to by the employee, as it would be for other employees, and the burden that it places on the pension system. There's, just to talk about the prior, the Chief Altamore situation, my understanding is, that legislation did not cause the chief to vest until the moment he would have been fired. If that county executive terminated him, that would have caused the vesting in one of the pension plans, and that would have saved his job. That is still active, so my understanding is if we were to have another police chief that were to be hired before the vesting of their police pension plan, that they would be, that provision would still apply, and the Office of Law is free to correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that provision would still apply to that newly hired chief. The reason that legislation was introduced, as Councilmember Smith can surely attest to, is we had a prior chief who was promoted to the position of chief before he was vested, was not so protected. And if everybody remembers, there was a bit of an issue with the county executive at the time, and the police department, and the police chief being in a position where if he did not follow the direct orders of the county executive, he would lose his entire 18, 19 years' worth of service and pension. And the, you can read the news on that whole situation. I would point out that the pension law specifically prohibits the recalculation of an original pension. That is one of the very strict prohibitions. This would accept one employee, or if it was amended, one type of employee from that provision. That provision generally is going to provide a substantial windfall. The proper way for a re-employed employee to take advantage of the pension system is to put their original pension, that's a set thing, set in stone, they can earn a new pension. They, an exempt employee has options on which pension system or the 401A plan to enter. And in this case, the employee can make that decision, vest, not vest, however, based on their decision, but earn the second pension. There's only some very limited circumstances where an employee cannot earn a second pension. Right now, the upcoming legislation is going to address some of those issues, but the law is set the way it is. It is, when the employee was hired, they had the law at their disposal, they understood the ramifications, and that's kind of what we are stuck with. There are many, many employees who are stuck with the same situation. They are stuck in the pension payback situation, or the inability to recalculate their pension. But this legislation only addresses the one individual, which is the Pension Oversight Commission's problem with this, that it's addressing one individual. And I would, we haven't analyzed a bill that's not in front of us, but if it were to even be expanded, and keep in mind, this will be my last act as Pension Oversight Commission Chair and Member, so I can't, certainly can't speak for what will follow me, assuming you all pass Resolution 1424 tonight. Thank you for that. And, but I can't necessarily speak to that, but even legislating for a certain group to get an exemption from something that everybody understands as they're going into it, just, I don't believe, from my eight years of experience on the Pension Oversight Commission, that that would pass muster either.
Thank you. Ms. Radveen?
Thank you. So I, we haven't held the public hearing yet, so we may hear more about the things that I raised. I just want to thank the individual in question here. I'll let him or representative identify him at the, you know, when they do come and testify, if they do so. But I had a very long conversation with the individual, you know, and I got a very detailed history, a very thorough history of what had happened. And my understanding is there were some significant communication errors, things that were conveyed incorrectly to the individual over the course of the process regarding whether or not they were vested, how long it would take for them to vest, and which pension system they would be placed in. And then there had been back and forth about, well, we could place you, you know, we placed you here, but we could have placed you there, so we'll try and make the switch. And so I just feel like, you know, it's, in order to make good decisions, or good, I would, not even good, informed decisions, you have to have consistent and accurate information. And my understanding is that there were even disputes at some of the, at the time, between personnel and the Office of Law about what was allowed to happen going forward. And so that really strikes a chord with me, that in order to make informed decisions, you have to have the right information. And I'm hoping that individuals will testify to some of the information that had, you know, been shared through the process. This is, in my opinion, an incredibly unique situation. This is, you know, one that I don't think we're going to see, you know, we could, we were, you know, when we talk about slippery slope, are we opening the door to, you know, all kinds of things? I really don't think that's the case. I think, you know, we have a case where an individual was basically recruited to come back to Anarondo County for a very specific reason and a very specific purpose. And so we're not likely to, you know, I'm not fearing any slippery slope, because this is a very unique situation. So anyway, I hope that we hear some of that in the public testimony.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I'll be quick. And that bill was, it was 4915, and it actually applied just to the police chief. It even says in there, because initially, we were going for the county attorney as well, but we amended it out, out the county attorney, just because there was some back and forth, and we settled purely on the police chief. And the language, the birthday, it is only one person that it could have applied to, based off the language that's in the bill. But if you want to look at that, and, not that he could, he's retired already anyway, Chief Altamore, but we did pass it, no one challenged it, and it was directly related to his pension eligibility if he had been relieved, because he was a captain of one of the stations, the northern district, and he got appointed to police chief, and he was concerned about being the police chief before he had reached his 20-year mark, and he didn't want to get fired and be able to retire. So we allowed him, through that mechanism, that if he was to be terminated, that he would still qualify for it. So we made an exception for one person. And I had, you know, our county, sometimes, I know it sounds weird, but the greater good sometimes is helping, it's the least, it's the person that you wouldn't expect. I know Ms., Ms., she comes up here, she gonna slap me that I don't know her name right now?
Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Johnson, yes, Ms. Johnson. Comes up at every single council meeting, and some days, I feel bad, because we can't help her, but the moments we can help just the one person, I'm all about it. So, thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you. I'm just going to read certain portions of 4915, because I pulled it up, right? Here are the standards for a participant hired or not after February 25, 2002, the participant's 50th birthday and completion of five years of actual service, or the participant's completion of actual service plus disability year, disability leave totaling 20 years. That's what it talks about. So I mean, it's pretty specific. And there were actually even more specific provisions that were amended out in prior iterations, right? And it says the police chief. So I guess it's still in the books, but you'd need somebody to fit that exact criteria. But anyway, we may get to a point after public hearing, if necessary, where I ask to hold this bill so we can get some amendments on it and do what we need to do. So I just ask for my colleague's support on that. When we get there, we're not there yet. I want to do public hearing first.
Mr. Shire, I see your light. Are you looking to speak?
Yeah, just for reference, those two provisions you mentioned, the 50 years and 50-year-old and the 20 years, those are the standard vestings for the police pension plan.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
But the one line in there, for a participant appointed to be the chief of police, the first of the month coinciding with the next following the year earlier, like, it literally is only talking about the police chief.
I'm not going to comment on the constitutionality of that, that wasn't, Pension Oversight Commission, I just wanted to make sure that the pension law was clear as far as what that, what Councilman Volkey was talking about.
Okay, seeing no other comments or questions at this time, we will open the public hearing on Bill number 23-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received three pieces of written testimony, which have been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
I do have one individual signed up in advance. When I call your name, you may come, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Since I do only have one individual, Mr. Ben Barlow, if there are others here, you may fill in the remaining seats, and we can move the public hearing along as it is advancing in the hour. Sir, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Yes, Madam Chair, Ben Barlow from Smithy Law Group. I'm here with Deputy Chief Gerard Flemings. Thanks for having me here tonight, Madam Chair and members. One thing I would like to point out is I was looking at Bill 4915, and I see it was passed by the county council on May 12, 2015. I think that day's important, because Deputy Chief Flemings had served Anarondo County for 25, over 25 years, and he retired in 2012. 2015, I don't have to tell you what a rough time that was for law enforcement. Freddie Gray up in Baltimore, it's just, everybody was desperate for experience and steady hands at the teller. That's when Deputy Chief Flemings was asked to come back from a job that he loved in That's when Deputy Chief Flemings was asked to come back from a job that he loved in Queen Anne's County, his retirement job over there, a great job for him and his family, but he was asked to come back here, and he answered that call. That was in August of 2015. And so, when he's talking with people about coming back to Anarundel County, and there is some conversation about what's going to happen with pensions, and somebody says, that might be something that we can figure out down the road, it's important to note that the County Council had just done this. So, there's every reason for Deputy Chief Flemings to believe that things can be done when it comes to the pension. One thing I would like to just take a step back and point out is the broader picture here. What we're talking about is somebody who has given over 34 years of his life to Anarundel County in law enforcement, someone who's from this county, someone who served this county for 25 years, was only gone for three years, and then comes back, and now he's in a position where whatever pension he gets will be half of that of people who have 10 years less experience. The County Council might have to amend this bill that's here tonight, but I've heard you tonight take a lot of steps to address individual landowners, even somebody who has a tidal spring, or a tidal stream behind their house, but needs something done. And you all are in a position to do it, and we would just ask that you figure out a way to right this wrong. Thank you very much for your time.
Sir, go ahead. State your name and address for the record, you have two minutes.
I am Lieutenant Colonel Retired Stephen Telet, United States Air Force. I'm also the pastor of Asbury-Brownak United Methodist Church. For the last 20 years, I reside in Severn, Maryland. I'm here to support Councilman Volkey's Bill 2324, that would make Deputy Chief Flemings whole by keeping promises made in the past. I mention my military background, because it's pertinent with respect to what often happens to military members and veterans. Folks in the Congress will say, support the troops, support the troops, as long as it doesn't cost them any money, and as long as the cameras are rolling. But if you say you're going to support the troops, you need to support them. In this situation, Deputy Chief Flemings has served for 34 and a half years, eight and a half years post-retirement, he came back upon request to do this. We always celebrate our police as those who run toward the danger when others run away from it. We owe him everything he's due. He's a man of integrity, who tries to fulfill his oath to serve the right way. When problems were happening up in Meade Village, he called me late at night. We had that kind of relationship. He would call me, I would call him, I showed up, walked the neighborhood with him and other officers, with Pastor Jay Offer, Bishop Eric Wright, and we did it in tandem to try and keep the lid on things, and by God's grace, we were able to do that. Assurances were given, and are now being reneged on, and he's gone through eight and a half years of additional stress, and now the county wants to suddenly have a short memory and move the goalposts. Exceptions have been made for others, the county does what it wants to do when it wants to, so do it now. In the past bill, another bill that was discussed tonight, Councilmember Rodvian used the word inconsistent. We've heard that an exemption was made for Chief Altamare, another friend of mine. An exemption was made for another officer to make her whole after changes were made. You can do the same for him. Finally, in the Bible, Jesus said, let your yes be yes and your no be no. Chief Flemings was told over and over again, yes, we'll fix it, we'll work it out, do the right thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pastor Cheryl Menendez. I am actually, I reside at 407 Joyce Drive in Glen Burnie, Maryland. I'm a little real emotional, and I only have two minutes, but that same meeting that he's talking about, I received a call from someone I did not even know which would have been Deputy Chief. He said that there were some issues going on in the Meade area, there were some drugs, there were some things that were happening, and he wanted to get a group of pastors together to see what we could do about it. As a result of that, they met up in one of my buildings, we met for several times. We were out there walking at night, he was there. That's just one piece, I won't go into all of that. But then, when we opened the Adolescent Clubhouse in Brooklyn, Deputy Chief showed up at our grand opening when other officials did not. From that point on, no matter what happened, whether it was doing food, he was there. He was out in the community, he was in Brooklyn, he was in Laurel, he was there passing out food, and even had our chief of police come. I have never seen anyone like him, because what he did was break a barrier between some races, and between some things that were going on in the community. They found someone they could finally trust, and he's been there ever since. I don't understand, because we talk about land, but we're talking about a human being who's given his life to work in our communities and do the things that our people, that all people need. We even get reports from him every month to show us what it is, the drugs that have taken place, our youth, our families. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Reverend Dr. Carlotta Allen, pastor of Historic Asbury United Methodist Church, 87 West Street. What struck me most in the response from the Pension Oversight Commission were these words, "We believe the situation originated from misinformation and not malfeasance." There was so much misinformation. Full disclosure, I am also one of the chaplains of the Anarundel County Police Department, and I have been now for quite some time. So, I have come to know these men and women pretty well, and I certainly know this gentleman very well. There was so much misinformation, and he's a smart guy, but he was trusting the information that was given him. What I know, while I was sitting here, there's an app called Officer Down, and while we were sitting here tonight, another, actually two, law enforcement officers lost their lives in the course of doing what they do, which is running towards the danger to remove the people who make us unsafe. So, thinking about your pension 24/7, as I might, is not what he does, and he relied upon the information that was given him. As he went about doing what he was called back to do, which was to serve, at a challenge, it's always challenging for law enforcement, but that particular time, when he was called back, he was the man for the job, and he got to it, and he has remained to it ever since. So, no, there was not malfeasance then, but there is malfeasance now, if this isn't corrected. It's about being made whole. And as has already been said, we, you want to make the landowners and the property owners whole. You understand that task. But the notion that someone could give that much of his life and end up with so little is simply wrong.
I am Reverend James Bishop, 51 Nightfall Lane, Pasadena, Maryland, 21122. I can save some of my time just by reiterating what has been said, at least by three of my colleagues, because I have been with them during these times when we were led by Deputy Chief Flemings to do some good for the community. I would say this, the part that would trouble me more than anything else is, is not to do right by someone who is a product of this county. He's a product of this county. He didn't come from somewhere else. And to do wrong by one who is a product of what this county made him and helped him to be, would be shameful. I say this, and I'm true. One of the interesting things, most beautiful things you ever see, is a total eclipse, solar eclipse. And what happens to make the eclipse, the eclipse is that the moon and the sun and the earth fall in line. We're asking and hoping that you will fall in line, this council, fall in line with the executive branch, fall in line with his history and career, and this is going to come out all right.
Good evening. I'm Deputy Chief Gerard Flemings, and am I held to my two minutes, or are we going to ask questions? Or, I noticed some information that was requested. Well, let me, one thing I'd like to make clear, or I'd like to clarify a couple of things, as Reverend Telet indicated, that I was given promises, and by that, over a several-year period of working with CAO Matt Power, back and forth, once this pension discrepancy came up, several years of back and forth, back and forth, him working with the Office of Law and county personnel, he eventually said, sorry, the Office of Law says nothing we can do, seek help from your county councilman. So, that's what I did. I went to Mr. Volkey, that was back in September of '22. Mr. Volkey did draft legislation, which is, I guess, a previous version of what is now before you. And after a couple more months of back and forth, Matt Power, the CAO in authority at the time, who had the full authority to make agreements on both October 26 and December 5 of 2022, he assured me that the county would not oppose this legislation. He had multiple conversations with the Office of Law, personnel, based on what he told me, the Pension Oversight Committee too, and I'm not saying that they agreed to it, but he had multiple conversations with them. So, my point is that he obviously took all of that into consideration, when he agreed with, agreed to me, or assured me that the county would not oppose the bill. So, what I would ask you to hold the county to their agreement. Now, I did, well, he agreed to that, the new CAO went into office right there in December also, and immediately, there was indication, the CAO called me, indication that they were, a county was backing out of the deal, and eventually, on February 6 of '23, based on my email, that CAO did say that the county was, understood that there was an agreement not to oppose, but the county was not going to oppose it. I ask you to hold the county accountable to their agreement, hold them responsible for what they should do, and I ask you not to punish me for me coming back to the county.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Panel is dismissed.
One more thing about the pension, I don't want to leave this. Ben, I mentioned as far as the half, pension being half of what others were, that was the case until I stayed until August of '23, I did that. In case this legislation did fail, I at least wanted that backdrop of having that civilian pension. So, that's not, that was true when I first started all of this, it's not quite true now as far as that half of everyone else, but it's still nowhere near what everyone else. I love the way.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on Bill 2324, to move things along, we do have five more seats. Sir, state your name and address for the record, you have two minutes.
O'Brien Atkinson, with the Anarundel County Fraternal Order of Police. We wholeheartedly agree that the administration should make the corrections to Deputy Chief Flemings' pension. They do owe him everything he is due. However, from our research, the personnel officer has the authority and the ability to do so with the support of actuaries and fiscal notes. The FOP supports addressing and correcting Deputy Chief Flemings' benefits, but we agree with the administration and oppose this legislation as it just carves out one individual member. And this was a direction from our Board of Directors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The public hearing on Bill 23-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 23-24. Bill Number 2324, An Ordinance Concerning Pensions Interplan Transfers, Deputy Police Mr. Volkey.
Making a motion to hold this bill until our next legislative session in May. The reason I say it's next legislative session is I think there may be something at the end of this meeting that makes our legislative session in May on the first. So, instead of kicking it to the first Monday in May, we might be able to kick it to the May 1 meeting, if we have one.
We already have a May 1 meeting legislative session scheduled.
Yeah, my motion's to that legislative session.
You want to do this on May 1, rather than May 6?
The amendments, yeah.
Oh, the amendments.
Yeah, because I'm going to hold it until May 1, and I'll come in with amendments.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the vote to hold.
Is this a discussion before we vote?
The motion to hold is not debatable. To continue conversation, we can probably continue conversation after we hold this Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the vote to hold the vote on this bill.
To hold the bill.
To hold the vote on Bill 2324 until the May 1, 2024 legislative session. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, the motion to hold the vote on Bill 2324 until May 1 has been adopted. Mr. Smith.
Well, I was simply going to say, and thank you, Madam Chair, you know, it's unfortunate that we even had to hold this vote, because quite frankly, we could have just voted this up tonight and put this man's mental sort of patience at ease. You know, you know how hard it is when you're fighting the system, whether it's land, or it's your pension, and it's this constant battle to like, prove to yourself that you even matter, because the system sometime is so big, it just runs right over you. And here it is, we had a chance to send this man home with his family and say, look, we got you, because you had us. And damn it, we did it again, we just postponed something that, that I don't think, we did it in 2015 for the police chief. We didn't hold it, we didn't hold the vote. But for him, now we got to hold the vote.
I appreciate. Mr. Smith, no. This is a business meeting, we're going to hold decorum. Mr. Smith, I appreciate your passion on this issue. It is confusing, and we do, I do think we have a large classified service of employees that earn a pension, retire, and even some that come back to work in the exempt service as appointees under, you know, political appointees across departments. I do think we owe it to our entire workforce to examine this issue and make sure that the legislation we pass is sound. So, I'm voted to hold this vote and see what Mr. Volkey can work towards in amending it. We certainly want, not only do we want our bills passed to be constitutional, but we also, I'd also like to fully understand the issue at hand, the remedies that have either been, the various remedies to the issue, and make sure we handle this appropriately. So, did you have anything further? With that, this bill will come back on May 1, 2024. Okay. Madam Secretary, where are we on time? God, it's 11 o'clock. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill, emergency Bill 26-24. Bill Number 2624, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Zonings, Amendments to Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Notice. Mr. Volkey and Mr. Smith, this is your bill, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. who are going through the comprehensive rezoning process right now for their regions. They have seen this more acutely than I have. I've sort of observed some of the issues that they've experienced in their, in their regions from afar, and I've talked to some of the stakeholders in their regions and heard those issues firsthand. So with that, I have looked at this both with an eye to helping them in their regions with some of the issues that they have encountered, as well as looking forward to Region 4, where both Ms. Fiedler and I will have a significant number of, you know, we'll have huge swaths of the county that we're looking at for rezoning. But with that, Mr. Smith has done an excellent job putting together a presentation that hopefully, if he can run through, I think may address a lot of the concerns that the community has.
I'll try to be brief because I know it's getting late. And what I wanted to do was put together a presentation that kind of walked through my experience over the last four months, if you will, in particular with this piece of legislation, and to offer up, obviously, to this body and certainly to educate the public on some of the challenges that I faced going through the current construct of how we change comprehensive rezoning, how we amend comprehensive rezoning. So just so everyone is aware, oh, it's not on the, it's not on your screens on the, up here?
Oh, we got it turned on.
If not, that's fine, that's all right. My screen is like halfway broke over here. Yeah. All right. So just to put everyone's mind at ease, I wanted to talk about kind of what this is. This amendments to the comprehensive rezoning, and specifically to, it's because I broke my screen here and now I can't see. One second. For those that don't know, I actually cracked my screen here, and the left side of it is not showing. So why this ordinance? Bill 77-24, Comprezoning, which is the bill that I was dealing with, six and seven-24, those are the two bills, the comprehensive rezoning bills, that the county executive over the last couple of years put together a team to remediate and look at what each parcel in those areas potentially could look like. And then they would make recommendations to finalize what that, what that was. So that's, that's why we're here. And I wanted to address some of these issues that, that came out during that process. And the biggest thing that I found was a couple of things. One, whenever we're trying to change back to what the current land was, it seemed very problematic. I never truly believed that if you have, and I'm going to use this example, R1, and your land right now is R1, and the county has recommended that you go to R5 or R10 or whatever they're recommending you go to, and you want to, you as the council member, once that bill is given to you, want to change that back to R1, it should be a simple process. But it isn't. It requires the homeowner to actually go and request signage. They have to go to Annapolis, pick up those signs, post on the property, so on and so forth. You witnessed some of this earlier when we were going through some of the legislation. And I had mentioned that during that timeframe, there were some properties that didn't kind of meet that 14 days. So to, rather, safe to say sorry, we kind of pushed it to the first so that we can make sure that they actually get through. And you certainly can see what those are in the coming months. But this bill only impacts, remember, comp rezoning legislation. We do that roughly every 10 years. There's been four in the past. This is like the fifth one, I believe, since the 70s when we first started doing this. So there's been about, this is the fifth one that we're getting into. So this doesn't, this is what this applies to, comp, comprehensive rezoning legislation that we do just roughly every 10 years. And Office of Law, if I'm wrong, you know, go ahead and say like, raise your hand and be like, yeah, that don't sound right, but, okay, maybe not. All right. Let me blow this back up.
May I interrupt you for just a moment? Do you mind making it full screen again?
Yeah, I am, I am now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the problem was my computer here. Yeah, we did that. Anyhow, there's a title in our, in our county charter. It's Title, I think that's 18 zoning, Title II, the general provisioning. That's the actual piece that we're modifying, that gives us directions on how to modify zoning in the county. Like, that's the chart, that second one, Article, what is that, Article 18? Is that what it says over there? Title II General. So that's the provision that we're trying to modify that gives us the authority to actually modify those, the zoning plan, as well as the maps that are in the county. And specifically, I'm calling out the certification process that we amended with 6923. I'm trying not to confuse you. Last summer, fall, we put a bill in place, 6923, that said, if we are going to amend the comprehensive zoning, rezoning legislation, then we had to meet that pink portion right there in order to get an amendment approved. There's some other stipulations, but this is the meat and potatoes of what, what the issue was. The problem with that, that 14 day and the certification process is it does require, if you're going to change something back, participation from the landowner. If the landowner doesn't help you, it's really hard to get the certification because they can take the sign down, even if you're changing it back to what it was in the, in the ordinance, not the ordinance, the, the original zoning legislation. So even if you're changing it back. And in my case, there were several properties in Jessup specifically where I don't think the, the landowners were going to participate and, because they wanted to upzone it. So there are, there are a couple of landowners in Jessup, they weren't a part of this process tonight, who's, who would not participate in that process to put up a sign. So I could not change it. And I know that the community, and I'll get to this towards the end because there's, there's different flavors of this, it was community driven. And what, in that instance, it wasn't, it wasn't the landowner driven. But in the best interest of my district, I thought it was beneficial to the overall district by creating, maintaining, I should say, maintaining this buffer so that we can work out some of those issues you've probably heard me talking about in the past, primarily about flooding and traffic and things like that. That is a legitimate issue in the area. So a couple of facts about this particular bill. It was introduced February 5th. This is important, February 5th. We have 95 days to amend a piece of legislation, 95 days. February 5th is when it was introduced, and it expires May 10th. So remember that date, May 10th. We typically only vote on legislation on legislative days. We have the first and third Monday of each month to vote on legislation. That is it. And so if that bill is not amended within that window, it expires and then it's dead. So in this instance, if we, if we got to the end of this process and we didn't amend it, there were some property owners who are going to, in communities who would be impacted, in my mind, at least in a negative way, because that buffer that I want to create, or there's some other properties that are now going to go to R5 that didn't get in here tonight or into this process, and they can't because we don't have the time. So if this bill passes, I'm able to change those properties to R1, which is what those property owners want in the first place. So the problem that I came across was that 14 days turns into 40 days. So hear me out. 14 days turns into 40. And that's the problem that I ran into. And I'm going to sort of walk you through this process. I probably had about 43 plus individual property, properties that I was deliberating and making a sort of decisions on, interacting with property owners in inquests or inquiries and requests. Two of those, and you'll see in here, only two were from attorneys slash developers. And those two, I deny. They were, I actually put in an amendment to potentially change it and then got with the community, obviously, a couple of members who were in the communities, they were holistically on the same page, and those two, those two requests were rejected. So the lion's share of requests that I got were property owner driven. So think about that. It is, it is the individual citizen that drove most of my activity, not developers. And I know that there's this, there's this concern about this is, this is helping developers. No, this is helping you, the citizen, and here's, and here's what I'm going to do to show you that process. I did this on purpose. That bill was given on May, on February 5th. You see that? And in February, it's basically a washed month because none of you can come to the, to the dais and really talk about in depth that bill. So the first 30 days of a 95 day process is a wash because we won't be alerted by the citizen on whether or not that bill or their impacts are impacting them until they come in front of us. You all don't think that your testimony matters. It fricking matters because there have been times when you, you've been so deep in here, we have no choice but to change how we view on a bill. I get tired of Jessup saying, hey, Pete, help us, help us, help us. I'm telling you, it weighs on my spirit, right? And so I have no choice but to make a change. But I'm saying that, I want you to see that because the first 30 days is a wash, right? Doesn't matter because the first time we are impacted is when we can hear you testify about it, which is, which is March 5th, March 4th, I'm sorry, where that first, the first public hearing, that's the first time you, you all really kind of came out in reference to this bill. Now, this bill, this timeline applies to all future ordinance, bills, comprehensive zoning legislation. So don't just think it's, it's just this one instance. It applies every time we do this. So March 5th, you came out and you said, man, that doesn't seem right. We think we should, you know, we worked for 20 years, I went even here 21 years ago. But somehow, I get blamed for stuff that happened before I was even in the Marines. And so, but, but, but again, it goes back to the institution. We represent the institution that is causing you friction. And so we're, we're the embodiment of that. And so, but, but our goal is to try to remedy that, try to help you. So March 4th, we get the hearing, that public awareness kicks off around the 4th, 5th, that, that sort of peach color right there that you see, because I wanted you to see that on the map or see that on the calendar. So during that timeframe, we're, we're trying to figure out, well, is it really a problem? We're setting up meetings between community owners, landowners, so on and so forth. So December or March 18th comes, which is the next council meeting, remember, council meetings, which is the blue part in March, the second block. For this timeline, this is when I started reaching out to planning and zoning and saying, you know what? I think I want to do this. And so I'm going to planning and zoning, and they have an amazing staff. I'm so grateful they were patient with me because it was so many things going. We had property owners double dipping, if you will, in the sense that I went and picked up signs, we couldn't communicate fast enough, so they went to go pick up signs. So planning and zoning had to do two signs, two sets of the same signs for several properties. So during that, that timeline, it was pretty chaotic trying to figure out which ones I was going to accept and which ones I wasn't. I say that to say this, none of those are amendments yet. That's just, just dealing with the issue and trying to figure out what's in the best interest of, of the county or the best interest of that community, if you will. Now, let's get to April because April was really the, this month. April 1st was my drop dead deadline. That was in my mind, I even mentioned to several members, I need to have signs posted by April 1st because that's the day that I need to start the clock on the 14 day sign notification. No matter where I was in that, two weeks from the March 18th to the March 30th, creating the signs, all of them had to be up by April 1st to capture that April 15th window. What I didn't think about at the time, I'm thinking April 1st, April 1st plus 14, April 1st, oh, I should be able to do it. But what I wasn't thinking about was that the certification still requires a little buffer there. So even though I got 14 days of sign, they still have to receive certification, they still have to get all that. That takes at least another day, I would say, at least, maybe a day or two. I'm going to say in the best case scenario, it's at least one day that we make it happen. Regardless, if you get that notification, the signs goes up April 1st, and the 14 days is, is, is on the 15th, you don't, I don't qualify to amend on the 15th because the certification hasn't even been added yet. So now I can't even amend it till May, May 6th, which would be the traditional next council meeting. I'm not counting May 1st. That's a special thing that we're doing. We shouldn't have to do special things to, to address legislative actions. And we're creating, almost like a, with, with Chris Trumpbauer, you know, one of the things he'll tell you is when we got recurring revenue, we never want to create a situation where we're funding things and they don't have a future funding source. So we shouldn't be creating a mechanism that requires us to do emergency legislation or special sessions to, to, to process a standard legislative bill. So, so May 6th would have been that standard window. So if you, if you came to me on April 1st and the bill doesn't expire to May, May 10th, that's like 40 some days, right? You would think that I could be able to amend it. I can't. If it, those 14 days plus the one day of certification right there, the next time I can amend that bill is May 6th. Now, it expires May 10th. If I had amended it on May 6th, I can't even vote on it to make it a law on May 10th because it dies because the next council meeting is May 20th, right? So the whole point of this process was to show you that the 14, I'm not saying, I know some of you are saying seven is too soon, and we're going to get to that. What I'm suggesting to you is that 14 is not the right answer because it elongates the process for you, the citizen, to be able to make meaningful changes, not developers. I guarantee you, every single developer is paying attention to every single bill we drop well in advance, and they have staff, attorneys and everybody else that on the day that they can make an amendment, they're going to put it in. They're never going to not meet the timeline. You know who's not going to meet the timeline? Citizen. Citizen Joe Smith, who's not paying attention because they're working at home and they have a whole bunch of things going on, and it's the least of their worries. And so by, by having the 14 days, because it creates a 40 day process, you minimize, we have four opportunities to amend the bill if it's dropped on February 5th, four. Look at the council meetings. Don't count February. Look at the next, the next four stars, February, March 4th, March 18th, I can't see this left side of the screen, April 1st and April 15th, in a standard process are the only times we can amend the bill in a meaningful timeline before it expires. So by having 14 days, you eliminate one of those. Now you have three windows, really, to amend it. Now, in my mind, if you're, if you're, if you're at the latest, you're, you're, you're kind of hurting yourself, the citizen, not the developer, I guarantee you, no developer here is going to miss an opportunity to amend some that's going to give them money, guarantee you. But the citizen will. And so we need to make sure the citizen has the capacity to, even up to the last minute, to be able to address or have their concerns heard through this process. So, yep, I gotta speak fast. I know that times you get me, I'm more excited about this.
Mr. Smith?
Yes?
You may want to forego a couple of your slides just so we can.
Yes, I will do that.
Actually address.
Because we already did them.
Citizen issue here.
Yep. So I'm going to scroll through these, these were, like, what, what happened over the last few weeks? Me helping those citizens that had properties they wanted to change back, I literally was taking R1 back to open space. Like, who does that? Y'all, y'all sat in here all day and heard about concerns about upzoning. I literally took it back, not because of a developer, but because of a citizen. And so when you mitigate, when you minimize their ability to communicate and have action, it's, it's, it's not the, I know it's a notification for you all, but for me, it's the ability to act. Who, if you know something and can't act, what good is it? You see what I'm saying? Like, what good is it if I can't act on it if you take away one of those windows to address it? So that's what this was. I'll just go to this last slide. I had 43 plus properties that, that I, I literally counted every single parcel. It was 43 plus. 67 of the 1% of the amendments that you were seeing between today and May 1st were homeowner driven. It was the homeowner who wanted to change it. Another 28 was community. Couple of them right here in the, in the front row here who just, who don't understand, no, they won't, yes, no matter what. And so that was a community decision, even if it impacted an individual citizen. Because at some point, a community's identity should matter in a decision this big. So I actually factored that in and tried to make sure I was addressing some of the community's wishes in the process. And then only 5% of all of those, those interactions were from a developer. And of the three, there were, three, two were rejected. So the lion's share of all the effort went to the, and the communication went to the citizen. All I'm saying to you is get the 15, the 14 days, even if it's not seven, lower than 14 so that you can capture that third cycle or that fourth cycle and not eliminate it because the 14 day will push you past it. And that was the concern about this whole process. And I know I sped through that, but that's, that's one man. I would hope that you all that are in opposition to this bill, none of us up here, I certainly am not trying to do anything nefarious. I, very transparent, we really are here for, in our minds, it's certainly in my mind, the best interest of the citizen. And so I would hope that you would trust us in this process. I know that that trust word is, has to be earned, and over the years, we, the county government and the system has not earned that trust. But we, I would, I would go on the record and say that we have not been a face of distrust. I have not seen that in the year that, since I've been back when it comes to zoning thing. I just haven't. You, some of you all may not have liked the outcome, but I don't think there was any distrust in that process and how it was being executed. And so with that, I would, I would hope that you all would, would, would temper your anger, if you will, and, and sort of find a, you know, we could find a middle ground, but I assure you, the 14 days hurts you more than it hurts the developer. That's all I'll say at this point.
Thank you. Would the administration like to weigh in on this emergency ordinance at this time, briefly?
Very briefly, Madam Chair, because I know it's been a long night. Look, I think the administration is much more comfortable with 14 days. Um, look, I think the administration is much more comfortable with fourteen days. We believe that gives the proper and adequate notice, but we do recognize this is a council process at this point. So, Ms. Pompa wants to add anything?
Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. The only thing I wanted to add is that, because obviously I've worked very closely with you over the last couple of weeks, Mr. Smith, and the last month, I would say. Anybody who wants to retain the zoning, the way the bill is written, um, you are excluding from having to comply with this section, the people who want to retain zoning. So, the property owners on Yelson Ray, um, you know, Tracy Hendershot, they, they would not comply at all, even with seven days or fourteen days. Same thing for Gore, same thing for Allen, same thing for Holbrook, Miller, um, the whole lot of them. Campbell is the other one. They would not. So, I don't know that the sev, the seven days is, I don't think it'd be, it's not relevant at all for those cases in the future under this, um, because they, they're completely excluded from having to comply.
That's, that's correct. The consistency changes. The folks that want to retain their zoning will not have to post a sign. They still have to apply, and it still gets listed on the website as a forthcoming amendment. But they could, I mean, from my perspective, they could apply and, with a very short turnaround time and be able to get an amendment done.
Well, I'm, I'm just, can I, can I, on McCarran, can I, because I know we've got other lights up, but this is probably pertinent. There, there was an example I didn't go over, because I was trying to speed through it. Uh, in McCarran Court, there was a homeowner, all the rest of the homeowners want to go back to R1. But there's one homeowner who is a, uh, uh, like an eighty-year-old veteran, he got evicted, or he went to a medical facility, uh, and the bank foreclosed on his home. So in that instance, I can't get compliance out of that homeowner, because he's no longer there. Now the bank owns it, they're actually removing his stuff from the house. The bank is not going to work with me to help change that space back to R1, because in the bank side, now, you've got a property that's in a, that, that is now R5, it has a higher density level, so it potentially could have a higher value added to it, if you will. Uh, so you would literally create a situation where we'd have all these homes in here that are R1, but the bank would be, "Yeah, yeah, we don't want to comply with the, with the signage specifically." Uh, uh, so it would be in an island of itself amongst all the rest of this R1. So, I'm trying to, on the first, when this, when we take that signage requirement away, my goal is to change that property to R1, uh, so that I don't have to worry about the signage property for that home, uh, that was a veteran's home, or for a veteran who's, who's in a hospital right now. That's why I need this to pass, specifically for the signage requirement. But I'm also trying to convey to them that fourteen days turns into forty, and it impacts the citizen's ability to get remediation for issues that they come across at the, at, within forty days of, of the bill expiring. Uh, and, and so to give them that flexibility, the, the council members to address their issue, I think it'll help them. That, that's my only argument. So, turn this off.
Ms. Fiedler?
Madam Chair, thank you. Someone who requested a specific zone, another OPZ recommends, there's a rec, final recommendation for X zoning. Council decides, we're, we're not going to give you what you want, and we're not going to give you what OPZ recommends, because we heard from the public and we actually think that there's a better fit, it's almost a middle ground. Because it's not what they applied for, there is a sign necessary in that situation, correct?
Correct.
Those are the situations that I'm worried about. I'm worried that we're going to be at that last meeting, and there's moving public testimony, and there's another better zone for the property that's not going as high as was recommended, but it's also not what the property owner asked for, but it solves the issue, and we would run out of time. That's where I am.
I appreciate that, Ms. Fiedler. I, I have, when the bill originally came before the council, sixty-nine, twenty-three, it was a five-day. Uh, we hadn't quite a five-day sign posting scenario. The charter actually just requires notification. This council chose signs, and then we chose some days, right? And so, there's a website that lists potential amendments that will be, um, picked up or not picked up for zoning changes. My concerns are, I think we could go down many, many, um, roads with, with what, the example Ms. Fiedler just used was an excellent one, but for those property owners that aren't accustomed to sitting in the council chambers, who, or who aren't, um, sitting around even knowing that, um, Region Three is in the SAC phase, right? Like, they're just not paying attention, and that's a lot of people. I hate that the ninety-five-day life of a bill hinders those situations. Um, and we could talk all night long, and we don't have a lot of time, because we can only vote until midnight on legislation, gentlemen and ladies. So, um, those are my concerns with the, the fourteen-day timeline, which we didn't quite know until we walked it down the road and started implementing our own, you know, perfect piece of legislation. So, it's one of those unintended consequences. Um, is there any further discussion? We need to open the public hearing? Okay. Uh, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number, Emergency Bill Twenty-Six Dash Twenty-Four. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received twenty-four pieces of testimony, which were shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
We do have people signed up. Uh, I have three individuals, Suzanne George, Nancy Guy, Cynthia Pugh-Givens. Those are three seats here. I have three more. If anyone remaining in the audience would like to testify, let's be efficient with our time here this evening. I'm going to just start as I read the names. Ms. Suzanne George, if you are here. No Suzanne George? Miss George is gone. My apologies. Nancy Guy, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
My name is Nancy Guy, six oh five North Beskett Road. This bill does nothing, with nothing to enhance communion, communication between the government and property owners. It only benefits developers. The public will be less informed if given seven days, and the response time turnaround will be less. This bill only gives property owners that did not participate in the comprehensive zoning process and waited until now, at the end of the request, their zoning changes. By reducing the zoning signage to only seven days and not providing the application for public review, the county council is doing a great disturb, disservice to the local community by sneaking in this so-called emergency ordinance. Because zoning decisions have enough, have a long-lasting effect, the public should be able to research, comment, and understand the implications of the proposal. By lessening the time available, you're denying the citizens the proper amount of time to respond to each, especially since the zoning applications for Region Seven are still not posted. This bill is in no way an emergency, only in the eyes of the county council and developers, and it will benefit from that as well. There is no transparency here at all in the community, as it has been all along in the process. If the community snoozes for seven days, then the citizens lose. As the saying goes, if you snooze, you lose, and that's exactly what is happening here. The community loo, snoozes, and the developers and the county council win. You must oppose this bill. It is not right to proceed with such a sneaky, underhanded bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Pugh-Givens?
Hello, yes. My name is Cynthia Pugh-Givens, one zero five South Ritters Lane, Onslow, Maryland. I am the personal representative of the estate of Massey Griffin Brown at Shot Town Road. I represent my family members and those of us on Shot Town Road, whose zoning is currently RLD. Um, and with this zoning, the way it is, it makes it extremely prohibited for us to be able to build, um, as a family, as it was left to us. We've had this property since the late eighteen hundreds, and this zoning is so restrictive that it leaves us no options, really. Now, as far as this emergency ordinance goes, and the number of days required for signage, um, this bill, I know I, I signed up to speak for this emergency ordinance, but it also goes along with Bill Numbers Twenty-Seven, Twenty-Four and Twenty-Eight, Twenty-Four, Comprehensive Zoning for our Region Four, District Five. We've already submitted, uh, we submitted testimony to OPZ in November, and, um, their recommendation was to upzone us back from RLD to R1, which is what we were in the seventies. So, um, I can defer to them, but I would like to say that on behalf of my family and those of us, uh, who retired military in the family, we would like to come back to this, to this county, um, and our family members who are deployed. We would really like to be able to build on our ancestral property. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go here, sir. State your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Rick Rizold, eight two three Holly Drive East, Annapolis, Maryland, two one four oh nine. Um, I sympathize with Mr. Smith. But my concern is that it is very confusing, and I understand you're basically caught between a rock and a hard place with your timing, is what you're doing here. Uh, in the long run, I'm, am concerned, though, that maybe we won't have this good county government at some point. And, uh, seven days is really tough, uh, for making, getting organized. And perhaps the answer is to resort how you guys are managing the end of, the end of this project, and so that there is the appropriate amount of time to give us fourteen days. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Minahan?
Thanks. On behalf of the Growth Action Network, good evening. First of all, thanks to Councilwoman Fiedler and Rodvian and Ledbetter and Councilman Volkey for your conversations today. You've been very helpful in helping us understand what's in the bill. Um, I was quite moved by a couple of things Councilman Smith said. Knowing something but can't act is enormously frustrating, and I put the neighbors of these proposed zoning actions in that case. Knowing something or, and not being, having enough time to act is, those are the people I'm concerned about. When there's a proposed zoning, and I'm not talking about the second half of the bill, I'm talking about when my neighbor puts up a sign for seven days while I'm overseas. That's the person I'm concerned about. And so, we would like to see the first half of this bill amended. Uh, we can trust the council and the county to eliminate the signage requirements for properties that would not be rezoned. That's the second half of the bill. We think that's perfectly appropriate. But the first half of the bill, uh, is a mistake, relaxing from fourteen to seven days, and we're asking you to reinstate the fourteen days in the last six regions. Okay? You're stuck on two, four, and seven. You've got what you've got. But please consider limiting this seven-day limit, uh, notification period to just two, four, and seven, and coming up with a different notification scheme that allows, in the remaining six regions, the full fourteen days, so that when I'm gone for a month, or gone for a week, or gone for a weekend and miss this, the, the, uh, sign, uh, next to my house, I'm not left in the dark here. So, fourteen days, we think, is the right, right period of time, particularly since many of these are bypassing the SACs and bypassing the OPZ work and bypassing the Planning Advisory Board. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name and address for the record. You have two minutes, sir.
Name's Gary Muller from Jessup, Maryland. Wow, Pete, that was some speech. It renewed my faith in you. Um, as you, many of you know, I served on Plan Twenty-Forty. I served, or I attended all the meetings for the Region Two. This whole issue is the fact that the community outreach on Plan Twenty-Forty and Region Two just did not happen. If you look at the numbers that are in the documents, the numbers are pathetic compared to what Jessup Improvement Association, when we did our community outreach, we were getting fifty, fifty-five, sixty people, as Pete would contestify, in our hall that came out after Ellen Moss and I walked around and told all the communities, door by door, what was going on. And they said, "Oh, crap." So, the problem is with, that you're at this point right now is because planning and zoning couldn't figure out how to reach out and let the people know that they had to get involved now. We did it. I don't have as much resources as planning and zoning has, but the people came out. They should not have had to wait to this, the timeline that Pete put up there. They should have been aware of this for the last five years, and that hasn't happened. And that's why, at the last minute, all these requests came into Pete, and, and it was because Ellen Moss and I went door to door and notified the people. I fear that you're going to see the same thing happen in Annapolis Junction and Russet and Maryland City, because I don't know who else is advocating like Ellen and I did and the Jessup Improvement Association. The only, I, I agree with what Pete's position, the seven, to get by this fiasco that you guys got yourself in. I think the seven days makes a lot of sense, as Pete explained it, but the real solution to this thing...
Thank you, sir.
...is to hold Bill Six, Seven, Six Twenty-Four and Seven Twenty-Four until the fall.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, Ms. Guy?
Hello, this is Mary Guy, six oh five North Beskett Road, Annapolis. To use Mr. Volkey's words, this bill results in sandbagging of the community. The timeframe of seven days is unrealistically short. It does not provide for due process. It does not allow for input of taxpayers, residents, et cetera. Think about people who live next door or in proximity to the properties where people are requesting zoning changes. They have families, they have jobs, they have commitments, they have daily activities, they're working, they're caregiving, they're doing lots of different things, and seven days is totally unrealistic. It also requires that a person see the sign, and a lot of times, people don't eat, they drive by, they're preoccupied, they don't, it doesn't even register that there's a zoning request that's been put forth. Uh, the county wasn't even able to provide a copy of the application for the zoning, zoning changes along Willow Road properties during the seven-day timeframe. It's unrealistic to use this seven-day period. Fourteen is bare minimum, and it should go to thirty, which is what we had submitted early on when all this first came up. So please, don't, what's the rush here? People have opportunities. They can come back and revisit things. Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. I see, uh, a couple more people coming up to testify. This is last call. We have, we can only legislate until midnight, and we still have some agenda to get through. Sir, you've got, state your name and address for the record. You've got two minutes.
My name's John Alexey. I'm the president of the Jessup Community Association at twenty-nine, twenty Jessup Road. And Councilman Volkey and Councilman Smith, I thank you very much for your time and your efforts in putting this through. I do support the seven-day doing, considering the situation that our community has gone through. Um, Councilman Smith has been at our association numerous times over the last two months. We've actually had to run through emergency meetings to get the community together. The association actually had to spend a large amount of money to get a email address, because a lot of the community members were not aware of what was going on with the zoning, even though they've been told that it's been put out there. At each one of the meetings, Councilman Smith can contest that each time, I would ask the first question, how many people knew what was happening? And ninety-five percent, if not ninety-nine percent of the time, they said they had no idea what was coming down the road. At the last meeting, we had, as Gary Muller had indicated with Ellen Moss, we had close to about seventy people there. And again, the first question I asked, how many people knew what was happening? And they said, "No one knew." The biggest concern we also had, too, was a lot of the senior citizens in our area that do not have access to emails, who don't read the paper, who basically cannot even get out of a house, and their houses were being affected, including veterans. get out of a house, and their houses were being affected, including veterans. And that's a crying shame. So, I appreciate every effort you did, Councilman Smith, Mr. Volkey here as well. I mean, we were rushing, and I agree with you in your presentation. We were behind the timeline, and I was pushing hard for the community members, and there were still some out there right now that wished to go into the seven-day, because they still were fighting for their property. They did not ask for this to go up from R1 to R5, and they felt that this was a taxation against their property, and it was a property-taking. And people who live in this area here, who have lived here for 50 years, should not have to feel this way. And unfortunately-
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
State your name and address for the record. You've got two minutes.
Santa Claus, North Pole. Mark, 2383 Terrapin Crossing, HOA president for Magnolia Creek. Been here two years, and I only just found out about everything going on with the rezoning first time I met you, like, two months ago, right? Only because they walked around neighborhoods, one by one. We didn't get any emails. We didn't get any postcards. We didn't get any letters. My entire community, 78 homes that I'm representing, nobody got anything. Individual had to do this for us, right? So, rather than instead pushing to make a change, by the way, great presentation, and thank you for coming to visit us all, but rather than do it at the end and collapse that, instead, extend the period, so that more people can be told about this. The gentleman over on the end had talked about that, you know, makes it restricted, so it's not just one region or whatever, so that other aren't impacted as well. Give the homeowners more time. Extend the end date, so it's not just the 95 days that you had noted about. Allow that to happen as well. Allow more people to speak. Out.
Thank you. Ms. Fox, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Kate Fox, Davidsonville, Maryland, Chair of GAN Legislative Committee. I wasn't gonna testify tonight, because you've all heard from me already about what I think. I've had many long conversations with Ms. Leadbetter and Ms. Fiedler, sent a really nice, thoughtful response to my letter, and I heard from Mr. Volkey as well, and Ms. Rodvian. All I wanna say is, I appreciate your impassioned speech, Mr. Smith, but if their community outreach had started in February, soon as that bill dropped, you wouldn't have had a dead month. There could have been outreach going on already. The other thing is that the administrator for the council had a set of due dates up. She set a timeline up, and everybody knew what that timeline was, and it was on the website. So, and the person who said it's right that the developers know exactly when those timelines is, they're exactly right. But if the outreach to the community had been done in February, then we wouldn't be behind the eight ball. The second thing is, the second half of your bill that exempts the property owners who want to keep their zoning, you've already covered them. They don't have to meet that seven-day timeline anymore, the 14-day timeline. So, keep the 14-day timeline for the community to be able to deal with the really egregious rezonings that they don't want, and the ones that allow the people, the regular citizens who weren't aware of the process and want to keep their zoning, they're exempt. You've already done it. So, why do we need to drop it to seven days? That's all.
Thank you. The public hearing on emergency legislation 2624 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 26-24. Bill Number 2624, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Zoning Amendments to Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Notice.
It don't work.
Is there any further, Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you. So, if you were one of the folks that emailed me, and I was able to get back to you today, what I would encourage my colleagues to do, I do think that this is a fix that is needed for constituents in Mr. Smith's district. However, I would like to, I would like to separate, going forward, and I'm hoping my colleagues will commit to this, and that's why I'm taking the time at 11:46 to sort of propose what I'm gonna suggest here, is that we separate upzoning from retaining zoning, that we treat those two differently. Because I think most people, call me crazy, if the neighbor that they're living next to is going to have the exact same zoning that they already have, folks are gonna be fine with that. You've already been fine with that. If there's some other complaint, you're probably dealing it with some other way. So, I think the retaining, you know, if someone is doing what most of your constituents are hoping to do, is to retain their current zoning, or I guess go back from what has been in the submitted plan, that seven days is fine. No one's gonna be upset about a neighbor who's retain-
Ms. Rodvian.
Okay, I'm going.
Those, consistency change to retain won't need a sign at all.
Right.
So, we're still talking about, just wanted to make sure you understood what's in the bill.
Right.
It won't need a sign at all.
Right. But I do think that the 14 days for the upzonings that are coming from developers, and I think, you know, individual families that are looking to upzone their properties, you know, from, say, RLD to R5, are paying attention, because they know this is something they wanna do. So, I would just ask, I would hope to bring legislation to basically do that, to separate those two pieces out, to treat them differently.
Mr. Smith?
Yep. I'm gonna go real quick. I did sit on an amendment. The amendment is to bring it to 10 days. I know you all think 14 days is some fix. It really does reduce the cycle time for your councilmen to address. I'm telling you, there are citizens, we've not, they were communicating in, two years ago, but there are gonna be citizens always who come at the last minute, who either just moved here, or they just got a job here, and they're gonna ask, on April 1st, "I need you to fix this." It just will happen. Can you pass it around? There's an amendment to make it 10 days. At least give it 10 whole days.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
And then, and then you can put it on the bill. After it.
Okay. We're on a time crunch.
I know.
Amendment Number One. This amendment requires a change of zoning proposed by an amendment to comprehensive zoning to be posted on the subject property and the county council website for 10 days. Is there a motion to adopt? Is there a second?
It just takes a seven days and makes it 10 days, from the initial thing.
There's an amendment on the floor, motioned and seconded, to change the emergency ordinance from 14 days to 10 days of signage.
Instead of seven.
We can vote on this amendment and vote on this bill.
Yes.
Madam Secretary, please, is there any discussion, real quick? No? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Leadbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven and the affirmative, none and the negative. Amendment Number One to Bill Number 2624 has been adopted. Is there any further discussion at this time on emergency ordinance 2624? Madam Secretary, please, yes.
Could I just get a nod from my colleagues who would be willing to support the 14 days going forward for upzoning?
No.
No, I mean, I'm asking my colleagues.
No.
I'm saying no.
Oh, you're, you're-
You talking about some future, some futures-
Yeah, because I think what we're hearing loud and clear, and what we've heard in testimony all day, is that folks want 14 days. And I will tell you, I'm telling you that for the developers, which are the ones that are upzoning, and apparently even families who are here quite far ahead of time, 14 days is doable.
Okay.
Okay. Let's vote on this emergency legislation.
Let's vote.
Madam Secretary, call the roll, please. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Leadbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six and the affirmative, one and the negative. Bill Number 2623 has been passed.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you.
Sorry, 2624. My apologies.
I think that's the end of our bills, right? We just have resolutions after this.
Correct.
The only thing I would, if I can just take a moment, Ms. Rodvian, so, I don't wanna be obstinate about it, that's not my reason for not committing the 14 days, but I can tell you, here's an example, right? In my district, I have a property owner who wanted a particular zoning designation. It's far higher than I think they should get. The community wants them to get a much lower designation. For me to be able to do the amendment, I want them to go in the middle. And so, I've sort of put them in this position where I've said, "Look, I'm either gonna do it the community once, or you can back down," right? And so, we've had this conversation. My point is, even trying to get that through, what Mr. Smith is saying about the timeframes, that becomes an issue. So, that's not a developer-driven, that's a me-driven, right? I'm telling them, "I'm not gonna give you the density that you want. You can get something lower as a compromise." But those discussions have been happening over time. My concern is, when we get to my region, I'm gonna run into these same problems, where I'm 40 days trying to get these amendments through, that, quite frankly, there's no surprise to anybody, right? Everybody in the community's been watching this for years. They've been advocating for years on this. So, I know that this concern about things sweeping in at the last minute is real, because it's happened in the past, but I had a good conversation with someone earlier who I won't call out, but I said, what's amazing to me is the fact that we're even having these conversations today, right? 10 years ago, 15 years ago, these conversations wouldn't have been happening. The level of dialogue that is occurring, the level of information sharing on places like Nextdoor, the website that we have for the council, et cetera, it is exponentially greater than it was before, and this is an improvement over the lack of any notice that existed in every previous iteration of rezoning before this. So, I would only say that because I don't wanna be obstinate, and I'm happy to look at whatever you wanna propose, but that's why I'm reticent to commit to, "Hey, I'll do 14 days," because Mr. Smith, I think, has eloquently laid out the concerns that 14 days create. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree, and not every region is very different, and I know for Region Three, which is predominantly District Two and parts of District Three, it is not as mobilized, and I'm concerned that I'm going to be doing a lot of community outreach, which I already do, and education in advance, but there's still going to be those property owners that are just late to the party, and this is a once-in-a-decade situation, and the compromise at 10 days still makes me a little nervous, so I'm pleased with, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna have my SUV filled with signs running around District Three. So, that's my concern. I think this is a nice compromise as we move through. I think, I think Ms. Hummer has some thoughts on potentially charter amendments to how we extend the life of a comprehensive zoning bill, which would help in this tremendously. 95 days is not a lot of time, but I need, we've got lights, we have resolutions we can still do after midnight, although we could move through those, too. Ms. Leadbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will do my best to be brief. I've had a lot of conversations with folks in my community, some of the people that were in the audience tonight. I wanna sincerely thank both those in my community and GAN for engaging in the dialogue and making sure that I'm aware of their concerns. I do take it, I do take it seriously. When we were debating this original legislation, my colleagues will probably all nod, they know I was one of the folks fighting for 14 days, maybe even more, in fact, at that time. And part of the conversations I would have in lobbying one-on-one was, "Let's start with more, and if you come back to me and you tell me that the 14 days is not working, I will be open-minded, and I will discuss that, and I will take your advice under consideration." I'll be perfectly honest, you know, I had a tiny little sliver of my district in Region Seven. There hasn't been a whole lot of activity out of that. I haven't submitted an amendment. I haven't, I haven't walked this process. There are only a few people in this room tonight who have actually done this. I am hearing, I mean, we all heard Mr. Smith's presentation, but he's not alone. Other council members who have walked through this process have found the same challenges. They have the same fears. I feel compelled to respect the experiences of my colleagues. I am grateful that this 10-day compromise seemed to materialize, because I prefer a compromise whenever possible. So, thank you, Mr. Smith, for pulling that out of the hat. I do appreciate that, and hopefully, we can find a nice middle ground with this, where the pendulum has not swung too far to one side. It is protecting both the innocent and those who might like to abuse. That is what I'm hoping that we have landed on.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with everything my colleagues are saying. I also want to thank GAN. I want to thank the Broadneck Council of Communities. I know that you really wanted the 14 days. I hope that this discussion today helps to clarify and give examples of variety of scenarios where our hands would be tied to do things that you may agree with wholeheartedly and want us to do. I will also say that the level of transparency and communication that has come from me will continue throughout the process of Region Four. If you are lucky enough to get my paragraphs-long response that ended up on the Nextdoor app, that is the level of explanation I will provide to Region Four along the way. And I want to just say, I have lived in Region Four, AKA District Five, my entire life. I am the third generation to live there of my family. I want my kids to be the fourth, and their kids to be the fifth, so this matters immensely to me, and your comments matter immensely to me. So, I just hope that this gives you a little bit more trust in the process. Thank you.
Ms. Hummer?
Yes, and I do wanna address one thing that came up with you, Bill. I heard, we received a lot of testimony tonight and in writing from people who were very concerned that shortening this timeframe is a backdoor to do special favors for the developers. Speaking for myself, but I think many of my colleagues will echo this, the developers did not lobby us to make this change. This did not come from the development community. This was something that we, as legislators, realized was a challenge to getting, to doing good legislation. So, this is not propelled by the developers. This was, this is us trying to be responsive and to be the best legislators we can to fit into what is unfortunately a compressed timeline for legislation.
Are we ready to move on to resolutions? Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 13-24. Resolution Number 1324. Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Residents of the County to Serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anne Arundel County. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the Administration, interim Boards and Commissions Coordinator for this meeting, apparently. So, this resolution confirms the appointment of Adam J. Hertz and the reappointment of Edward Goslin and Mark T. Humphries to serve as county resident members of the Pension Oversight Committee Commission for terms expiring on January 31, 2028. I would urge you to adopt this resolution.
Is there any discussion? We'll now open the public hearing on Resolution 13-24. Madam Secretary, did we have anybody sign, did we have anybody, any testimony? No, Madam Chair, we did not receive any written testimony for this resolution. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to testify on Resolution 13-24? Seeing no movement in the audience towards the chambers here, we'll close the public hearing to Resolution 13-24. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 13-24. Resolution Number 1324. Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Residents of the County to Serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anne Arundel County. Seeing no lights or comments from my colleagues, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 13-24. Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Leadbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven and the affirmative, none and the negative. Resolution Number 1324 has passed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 14-24. Resolution Number 1424. Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Members to the Classified Service to Serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anne Arundel County. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the Administration. This resolution approves the appointment of classified service members Vincent Carbonaro and Nicole Clinton to serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for terms expiring on January 31, 2028. I will note, the county code requires that classified members, classified service members be selected from a list of names nominated by secret ballot. However, these were the only qualified candidates that were nominated, so we determined an election was not necessary. And there is one technical amendment that we're happy to discuss.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Resolution 14-24. We had no people sign up ahead of time. Madam Secretary, do we have any online testimony? No, ma'am. Thank you. We'll now, seeing no movement in the audience, we'll close the public hearing on Resolution 14-24. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 14-24. Resolution Number 1424. Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Members to the Classified Service to Serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anne Arundel County. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One. Amendment Number One. This technical amendment corrects a missing word and an erroneous word. Mr. Hunt?
Closing out strong with our continued opposition to typos, erroneous words, and missing words.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second? Clearly, I don't think there's any discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One, technical amendment. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven and the affirmative, none and the negative. Amendment Number One to Resolution 1424 has been adopted. Last chance for discussion on Resolution 1424. Do you all want to speak?
Oh, no, no, no. Sorry, I was ready to vote.
Oh, okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 14-24. Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven and the affirmative, none and the negative. Resolution Number 1424 has passed. I do want to thank those volunteering to serve on our boards and commissions. We don't want to disrespect due to our rush, but we are tired. Is there any, any other business?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Can I at least say?
One thing, on May 1st, we're planning to meet for the county executive officer to deliver his budget, as well as his other, his budget officer and staff who are going to present budget information. So I was going to see if it's possible to make a motion, I wanted to make a motion, that at the conclusion of that budget deliverance from the budget officer and their staff, that we go right into our session and vote on the amendments for the bill that six and seven, now that we got the emergency out the way, six and seven dash 24. I only have a few amendments, probably like, was she, two or three? I think they're combining them, so it won't be a lot. It'll be like 10 minutes. So instead of waiting until seven, right at the end of that, make a motion to...
Okay, so we don't need a motion, because the meeting's already been set by the chair. We also have other legislation that I believe is coming forward at the legislative session on May 1st.
Just introduction.
Just introduction. So we've set the meeting at seven. We can discuss an earlier time, but we have to have a set time. We can't just, it has to be announced publicly. If the Office of Law would like to weigh in here on, or Madam Parliamentarian, but we do have to, we've publicized the 7:00 PM legislative session. We can't just roll with it.
That's correct, but I don't think there's any requirement that it be at 7:00 PM, if that's the question.
Correct.
But the time has to be chosen and advertised, yes.
Correct. I mean, we're, I'm happy to discuss this. The point, the rationale for hosting, holding that legislative session at 7:00 PM is because we are in legislative session, we are discussing, we are holding public hearings, we'll have to hold public hearings, and that is the time we normally meet and also make our business meetings accessible to the public. That was the point of the 7:00 PM. Ms. Hummer?
But...
Oh, your lights on.
So I have a question for Mr. Volkey. Do you plan to, you said that you were going to be...
We've held another bill.
Yeah, at the 7:00 PM meeting.
Oh, that's what I thought. I knew there was something else.
At the May 1st meeting?
Right, the regularly scheduled May 1st, 7:00 PM. But if for whatever reason that meeting moves to an earlier time, then we just have to advertise that that bill's going to be heard an earlier time.
Right, no, no, I'm just saying that, making clear that there's more than...
Correct.
That there's multiple things being offered. And then the other, I also want to point out that for the schedule that day, we are scheduled to have multiple budget presentations beginning at 1:00 PM.
Correct.
So it doesn't give us, so the county executive's address is at 11:00 AM, and then we have something at 1:00. So I just want to put out that timeframe that we have there.
Correct. So it's unknown how long this council will be in session between the 1:00 PM, when we, when we'll go through, three, we'll go through the several presentations, ending with the budget officer. I have no idea. That is our opportunity to question those folks. So we don't know when that meeting's going to end. So picking a time that I, I chose seven, obviously because that is when we normally meet. It gives our staff the opportunity to tackle all the things they need to tackle for an agenda for a special legislative session at 1:00. I would, I would caution meeting too early in the afternoon because it precludes folks from being able to be at public hearings.
Would 5:00 PM be an okay? Because I spoke to the budget officer, Chris Trumbauer, and he was under the perception that that would be done probably about like 3:00 o'clock.
I appreciate that. I appreciate what the budget officer said, but he has no idea what kind of questions are going to come out of this council. So we can't know what time we're going to end. But with that coupled with being, holding a session for the public, listen, I'm...
I'm just bringing it up.
We have time to re-advertise a time, but we also have a duty to hold meetings when the public can be present.
Okay, but I'll make sure my amendments get out to the public tomorrow, so they'll definitely know what I'm amending on the first, well in advance. Thank you.
Okay, so we've got other people conducting business as well and holding public hearings. And we also have to, I'm very much aware that this is not, is going to be a very long